All right. I open this meeting of the Littleton Planning Commission at 6:31 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Reynolds?
Here.
Vice Chair Almond?
Here.
Commissioner Coronado?
Here.
Commissioner Neely?
Here.
Commissioner Radulovich?
Present.
Commissioner Rothlesberger?
Here.
Commissioner Santana?
Here.
Commissioner Ritter? Sorry. Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. If you are able, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing no changes to the agenda, the agenda is approved as published. Item number four, minutes to be approved. We do have minutes certification of the April 14th, 2025 transactional and regular meeting minutes of the Planning Commission. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve, based on the clerk's certification, the April 14th, 2025 transitional and regular meeting minutes of the Littleton Planning Commission.
Second. Motion by Rothlesberger, second by Coronado. I will set up the voting.
Although your name says Goodman up there, we know it's you, and we'll get that fixed. The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now is the time on the agenda for public comment that is not regarding one of the other items on our agenda this evening. And just for everyone's information, other items this meeting that we'll be having public comment on this evening are the Littleton Boulevard rezoning, accessory dwelling units, and changes to the ULUC for residential occupancy, non-functional turf, and minimum parking requirements near transit. So if you have comments on any of those public hearing items, those will be later this evening. If you were able to sign up on the speaker sheet, I'll call your name. And if you were unable to sign up, there'll be an opportunity after those who have signed up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and we expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior won't be tolerated. And for your information, this board is not authorized, under the Colorado Open Meetings law, to discuss or comment or take action at this meeting on items that are brought up under this unscheduled public appearances because those items were not published on the agenda in advance. So I have one person signed up for public comment, Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here. So yeah, first, I do hope that Commissioner Almond's name gets fixed soon. It was like that two weeks ago. Not sure why it's like that now. The April 28th meeting should have been a regular session. It's the fourth Monday of the month. It was changed to study, and I object to that. I've objected to it for years. For some reason, people think that if we're just discussing something among us, the Planning Commission, we'll change that to a study session, and I object fundamentally. So I would like to believe that the members of our legislative and quasi-judicial commissions care about public comment. And if we see something on a study agenda and want to comment on it, I would like you to be interested in that comment and invite it. But when the agenda is changed to remove public comment, you don't get to hear that. So that's my primary reason for asking for that. And I think as members of the Commission, I'll just appeal to you about that. I also wanted to talk about the plating process, which talked about, you know, making the public right of way administratively approved. I don't think our planning process needs more streamlining. It already was weakened in a major way. We used to have a whole separate chapter of code for subdivisions. And it was weakened by combining it with the rest of the code. And now it's like, well, let's make it administrative if it's this kind of decision. Formatted public comment is regarded with suspicion and distress by the public. Yeah, I think rightfully so. And again, I don't think that making more things administrative is good for the city. The mailing notices, maybe the flexibility in who sends them is good, but pros and cons were not presented to us. And it's hard for us, I think, the public, to understand what the cons might be to us again before it gets enacted and we discover those. And really, the notice problem is the distance and inclusion of more people who are impacted by those changes. Like for transportation, people all along the corridor are impacted. So notice, that wasn't included in this, but something else was. Lastly, the master sign plan. I was really disappointed, and I appreciate Commissioner Neely's comment. We need illustrations of those. And you know what? There must be tons of examples of existing built signs everywhere around the city of all the different signs you considered. Even if they're not easy to draw, pictures could be taken of the different kinds of signs. We need illustrations of the alternatives in the study phase, not at the public hearing. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Planning Commission on items that are not otherwise on the agenda?
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Kent Bagley. My address, 1467 West Briarwood Avenue. Previously, up until 2008, I sat on this board as the chair. And I know three of you quite well. And my general comments relate to the issue of home rule cities and statutory cities, which, if you don't know the difference, I would say, look it up. Littleton is a home rule city, and I think it's really important for home rule cities to determine land use regulations, not to have 100 members of the House and the Senate determine those in conjunction with the executive branch. And that's my big statement. This city could have been like some other cities and been concerned about home rule versus statutory cities and filed complaints in relation to land use regulations that are defined by the state, which you're going to hear about more. But this is a general comment. It's really important for home rule cities to look at land use regulations as being their authority and not state. Not 100 members of the State House and the State Senate, 35 and 65, to make 100, who know nothing about local land use regulations, nothing. And I've testified many times before the State Senate back in the late 70s. So I'm well aware of how this works. But I thought that I would bring this up as a general comment for you to all to think about this and for your city attorney to think about it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the Planning Commission on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no rush for the podium, we'll move on to general business, of which we have none. We do, however, have several public hearing items. The first item is PC Resolution 05-2025, recommending approval to City Council to rezone 439 and 589 West Littleton Boulevard and two parcels directly north and east of 439 West Littleton Boulevard from neighborhood commercial to corridor mixed. We'll start with the staff presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We'll get started on explaining this. So just going to go over the requested action, some of the details, and then the analysis and recommendation. So specifically, the applicant is requesting approval of rezoning of four parcels located at 439 and 589 West Littleton Boulevard to go from NC to CM. The two associated parcels are just not addressed. They're all owned by the same property owner. They just don't have an address. That's why we kind of, sorry, grouped them in that manner. Just going over some of the outreach and noticing it was noticed per our code, and they did have two neighborhood meetings leading up to this public hearing. The total site, so all four parcels, is about 1.482 acres. It was originally used for agricultural and residential purposes. It is currently vacant. It has a vacant single-family house and a small shed. And then the 2019 Vision Littleton, our comprehensive plan, has designated this property as corridor mixed, according to the future land use and character area map. Again, specifically, the kind of request is to go from NC to CM, noting the kind of four parcels outlined there in red and noted as CM. For the kind of surrounding properties, to the north is zoned MFR and NC, does have multifamily residential, as well as actually an office. For the east and west, also zoned NC and has a mix of retail and restaurant uses. And then south, across from, across Littleton Boulevard, is zoned small lot residential and does have single-family houses. This is the kind of criteria that we'll be looking at tonight, looking at consistency with the comprehensive plan, compatibility with the surrounding uses, the potential impacts of traffic, impacts on our public facilities, and then the impacts on the natural environment. So for the analysis, staff did find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, it is currently noted on the future land use and character map as corridor mixed. For compatibility, CM is found along Littleton Boulevard right now, does, is overall compatible with the character in terms of the immediate adjacency. There is commercial and multifamily properties of both higher and kind of medium-density multifamily that are kind of within that immediate adjacency. And then across from West Littleton Boulevard are single-family houses. Just to note, Littleton Boulevard is about 100 foot of right of way, and those houses do front on the local streets, so they are faced away from Littleton Boulevard. For traffic, the rezoning could create a potential increase in trip volume and peak hour trips. We did have our traffic engineer kind of help review some of this stuff and did note that, accounting for the current conditions in the, along Littleton Boulevard, is not expected that this potential increase would cause any undue congestion, noise, or traffic hazards. And that is looking at the most kind of highest impact use, which I believe was a drive-through type use on CM. And drive-throughs currently are considered conditional use within NC. For the public facilities, there are no adverse impacts expected. Final drainage report and utility analysis would be required of any site plan kind of process or any construction process prior to the issuance of permits. And then for the natural environment, similarly, it would likely result in removal of trees, though any kind of development on this property probably would. So it would be required to comply with all landscaping requirements that include tree preservation as well, kind of mitigating those factors that are within the ULUC. And then, so for recommendation, we are approving or recommending approval of the rezoning, our PC Resolution 525.
All right, thank you. Do we have an applicant here to present as well?
Hi, good evening. My name is Alicia Kwan-Hammett. I'm with Zipper Line Strategies, 1475 Dahlia Street, Denver. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, South Metro Housing Options for the rezoning application of four parcels generally located at 439 and 589 West Littleton Boulevard. I want to thank city staff for shepherding us through this process and TU commissioners for consideration of our request this evening. So a little bit about South Metro Housing Options. They are the housing authority of Littleton. They're a nonprofit developer who has a mission of building and managing affordable and safe housing solutions in Littleton and Arapahoe County. They currently own and operate six affordable housing communities in Littleton, with their most recent development being Overlook at Powers Park and Montview Flats, which is currently in development review. South Metro Housing Options tends to develop and infill locations that are well-served by goods and services and transit. This ensures that affordable living is, that affordable living is also proximate to affordable housing. So to briefly summarize our request, we are looking to rezone from NC to CM. Both zone districts have a future land use designation of corridor mixed use, so we feel the rezoning meets the site context. If you look at how the Littleton Unified Land Use Code defines corridor mixed, we can see that the larger category of corridor mixed use, along with neighborhood commercial, so very similar zone districts, the main difference being that CM allows for a broader range of residential and commercial uses compared to the current zone district. So for to compare these side by side, we can see that the significant difference that is the impetus of this rezoning is that residential multifamily is not a by right use within NC. Rather, we could get there with a conditional use permit in a mixed-use configuration where the first floor would be commercial and everything above it would be multifamily. Because South Metro Housing Options charter is to develop and deliver affordable housing, we wanted to have residential multifamily apartment by right. And so this is why we're rezoning. If you look at the other allowed uses, however, the intensities are very similar between NC and CM, with out of this list, dwelling multifamily apartment maybe not being as intense as some of the other uses of retail, grocery store, or office. So Envision Littleton identifies the site as having a future land use designation as corridor mixed. And the purpose of the CM is to provide a mix of uses, including residential, and to provide additional housing options and price points within the community. The site is within the special corridor planning area, which is identified as an extension of downtown and being a critical corridor that can handle additional density and intensity of uses. I really like this map because you can see everything north of West Littleton Boulevard is purple, which is CM. Adjacent to that, that darker yellow is residential mixed. So we feel that this application really falls in line with the vision that was set within Envision Littleton and is compatible. This is the conceptual site plan. So we're looking to build a four-story apartment building comprised of one- and two-bedroom units for cost burden individuals and families with surface parking and an outdoor courtyard for residents. This concept is still being refined, and should South Metro Housing Options be awarded low-income housing tax credits from the Colorado Housing Finance Authority in November, the architectural team would move forward with a formal site plan application to the city. This is really in response to Littleton's housing needs. So according to the latest housing study, business survey, and resident survey findings, Littleton is short 1,350 units for low-income residents. These are folks who are often working service jobs in cafes and restaurants. Half of Littleton's business owners report there's a lack of housing that meets their workforce needs. Cost burden among both renters and homeowners increased with household spending more than 30% of their income on housing. Affordable housing was listed as the top pressing issue in last year's resident survey. In some small way, this rezoning would enable this future affordable housing development and will help meet the needs of Littleton residents and businesses who need to retain their workforce in the city. So a little bit about income-based housing or low-income housing tax credit funded housing. It was created by Ronald, President Ronald Reagan during the Tax Reform Act of 1986. The way the program works is that federal tax credits are allocated to state housing finance agencies. So in our case, that would be the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority by a formula based on population. Each state agency establishes its affordable housing priorities, and developers compete for an award of tax credits based on how well their projects satisfy the state's housing needs. Developers receiving an award use those tax credits to raise equity capital from investors in their developments. Tax credits are claimed over a 10-year period, but the property must be maintained as affordable for a minimum of 30 years. Because tax credits can be recaptured for any noncompliance, investors maintain close supervision over the properties to ensure their long-term viability and compliance with the IRS and state allocating agency requirements. Lytech is the most important federal resource available to support the development of affordable housing. It finances 90% of all affordable housing development in the United States. If this development were open today, apologize for the small text, we could see rent ranges from $735 a month for a one-bedroom for someone earning 30% of the area median income, approximately $29,000 a year, to $1,839 a month for someone earning up to 70% of the area median income. That's just shy of $69,000 a year. So if you look at our public servants, many of them would qualify for housing here in the future. South Metro Housing Options does not set the rents. The rents are set by the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority by county and in compliance with the low-income housing tax credit program. We had two neighborhood meetings that were held at Littleton United Methodist Church. We had approximately had 20 people at each meeting. They were well-attended. We did receive a letter of support from the Littleton Business Chamber. And I did want to touch on probably the most prominent concern out of those meetings was a traffic analysis and the traffic impact. So Fox Dental Transportation Group submitted the traffic impact study to the city for review, and they compared not only just what they thought this future development would generate, but also what the highest, most intense use would be with the rezoning. So if you took a drive-through. And it was nearly half of what like a drive-through or a more intense use would be. So we have about 35 vehicle trips in the morning and 32 in the evening for affordable housing, where there are more like 67 to 70 trips for other uses. So one of the reasons why affordable housing generates less traffic than market-rate housing is because each unit is leased by household. And those earnings, 30 to 60% of the area median income, are less likely to own more than one vehicle, let alone one at all, especially if you're on that lower end of the income range. So should this development be awarded tax credits? We anticipate an approximately $21.6 million investment in Littleton, which includes hundreds of jobs in the trades and construction and design, engineering, and owner, and maintenance and operation. This will provide a much-needed workforce housing, as identified in all of the surveys I mentioned earlier, and we believe this would be a huge asset to the community. So in conclusion, we believe that we have demonstrated consistency with the rezoning criteria. Our application conforms with the land use and character map of the comprehensive plan. It's compatible with adjacent land uses. That traffic generated by this future use will not lead to undue congestion, noise, or traffic hazards. We have adequate public facilities, and we are minimizing the impact to the natural environment and not harming adjacent properties. We have submitted reports to demonstrate compliance with the listed criteria, including a traffic study and preliminary drainage report. This concludes our presentation, and we have members of the design and development team here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the Planning Commission have questions for applicant, for the applicant or staff at this time?
As far as the tax credits, are they expiring anytime soon? Are we expecting them to get revoked? Are they, are they going to be in place for a long time, we hope?
We hope they'll be in place for a long time. So one of the great things about Lytech is it usually has amazing bipartisan support. So it's been very consistent regardless of presidential administrations, and so we anticipate that Lytech will still be here and competitive.
Actually, Chair, do we want to wait until public comment to do the question? Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, and I'll open the public comment portion of the hearing at 6:56 PM. And as for the initial And as for the initial public comment, people who have signed up will call, work our way through that list, and each person will be given three minutes to speak regarding this item. And if you have questions, we'll be jotting notes down and follow up with the applicant and/or staff after all the public comment has been received. The first person signed up is Michelle Heinz.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Hens, and I've been living in Littleton for about 33 years. I'm also the board chair for Love in the Name of Christ, which is a local nonprofit. I apologize for not looking more board chair-ish tonight, but I got the late grandma call this afternoon, so I've been hunting for bugs with a five-year-old. So, I apologize for that. But as many of you probably know, Love Inc. supports the community in many ways. We have a connection center where people can call in looking for help. That help is for food help, clothing help, housing help, rent help. I can tell you that the numbers are increasing, and the people that call us are desperate for housing. So, I think that the approval of the rezoning is desperately needed by Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kate Peterson.
Good evening. I'm Kate Peterson, a resident in District 3 as well as board chair of South Metro Housing Options. I feel as though I also need to apologize that I'm not fancier today. I walked over to the staff and apologized. I was pretty casual, but thank you for having me. And also, I first want to start by thanking you all for your hard work for Littleton to ensure that our city remains a community for people of all ages, incomes, and abilities. I'm here tonight in support of the rezoning of 439 and 589 West Littleton Boulevard to, from neighborhood commercial to corridor mixed use to facilitate the development of new affordable housing in our community. This proposal aligns with the recommendations of Envision Littleton as presented earlier, and the rezoning is compatible and consistent with the existing use along Littleton Boulevard. I'm confident the development will fill, fit the character of the community and maintain the aesthetics and functional integrity of this community. It will benefit not just the local area and that immediate neighborhood, but the city as a whole. As was stated earlier, you know, we have all these statistics and data. Latest business survey, half of businesses state there's lack of suitable housing for employees. Rezoning the parcel is a crucial step towards meeting the city's housing needs. We know Littleton needs more homes for residents with low incomes, primarily in the service industry. As mentioned earlier, according to the resident survey last year, affordable housing is the number-one most pressing issue. Our neighbors are struggling as home prices and rents are rising faster than incomes. By rezoning this parcel and permitting residential development, the city can utilize the existing land more effectively by providing workforce housing. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration today as you make a decision that best serves everyone in our community today and for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Pat Dunahay.
Good evening, Pat Dunahay. I live in District 4 and work in District 3, and thank you for your volunteerism. And I'm the third person to apologize for my look. I was on my bike, and I was late, and I just, and I promised that I was going to come here and not, you guys are smart, you know what to do. I'm here to say that if you guys don't like the Littleton Boulevard location, we have something in South Park. That's kind of a joke. We actually do have a site that I'd like, I'd love to have the same opportunity for. I got to go to their educational, I'd call it more like a school of Corey than anything else, and I just couldn't be more impressed with the way these residents take care of this place and how fortunate they all feel to be able to be right there by Powers Park. And just to see the joy in that and to walk all the, through this place and the way they take care of it, everybody in this room would be so proud of that. And it's neutral. It doesn't cost this community anything. We can just feel good about this. So, this is kind of simple, in my opinion, to ask you guys' support on it. I think it's had plenty of opportunity on that site to become commercial. That obviously didn't work, and you guys know I'm a commercial kind of guy. But we got to have good-looking buildings that sit along the right corridors, and I think this sure fits that. So, I'm really excited about this, and they're, this being hopefully their third place. And I hope they hang their hat here in Littleton, and I hope you guys can help endorse that. I don't know how we could help on a state or city level to encourage more tax benefit projects like this, but I sure think the concept of it seems to be pretty cool and pretty easy to sell and pretty good benefit for everybody. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Next person signed up is David Rhodes.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak before you. My name is David Rhodes, living at 6028 Southwest Hughes Street. Lived here for six years, moved to this area because I just, I loved the downtown area, loved the neighborhoods, loved the proximity. We joined a church in this area, and living here has been amazing. So, I thank you all for the part that you have done in really helping the rest of Littleton become what it is today. So, thank you. Certainly in favor of the rezoning effort. I have, I'm a grandfather, I'm dressed like this. I don't know if I should apologize for anybody else. My wife and I, within the last four days, spread 4,000 pounds of rubberized mulch around our house. So, we're pretty tired and a little bit beat up right now, but I definitely wanted to make this, this meeting and raise my voice in, in favor. And a lot of what I see, actually, when the survey came out also, for being able to look at different opportunities for what Littleton was going to do, I was one of the votes that went into looking at more affordable housing. I've got kids that can't afford to live here now. I have grandkids who will not even think about moving here. I have friends who have come here, are working, and are having a tough time finding a place that they can, they can afford to pay for. And so, I would love to see this. I know it's a small opportunity, but it is a step in the right direction. So, I wanted to let you know that I'm definitely in favor of it, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Stan Zislas.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Stan Zislas. I'm one of the owners of Silverstone Fine Cannabis. We've been operating in Littleton since 2009, so for 16 years. We've been at this location since 2012, so going on 13 years. We have a long history here, and we're proud to have become, hopefully, valuable members of the community to the city. For many years, I've envisioned Littleton Boulevard getting a kickstart in redevelopment. It does need some, it does need improvement, you know, to say the least, right? It needs, and I hope this building, I visited, I visited the building on, what is it? Powers, near the Powers Park, was very impressive with it. I saw the plans for the future buildings as a business owner and as a property owner in Littleton Boulevard. We're very much in support of it. We employ about 25 people at our Littleton location. I want to say less than two live in Littleton precisely because of lack of affordable housing. There are obviously, you know, other reasons, not just, you know, for, there are other, there are other reasons, you know, and lack of affordable housing is just one of them. But in terms of the greater vision, in terms of the improving Littleton Boulevard, in terms of, like Pat said, getting more better-looking buildings, I think this is a, I think this building fits, this project fits the bill. I think, I hope it'll serve as a Kickstarter for other developments. It'll support not only housing, but it'll also support businesses along Littleton Boulevard, especially with not only this building coming to the neighborhood, but, but others as well. This will also support businesses. So, to me, it's very symbiotic. I mean, I think long-term synergies are there, and I'm just here to, once again, voice our support for this rezon. Thank you. Oh, and I apologize for the t-shirt as well.
All right. Next up is Pam Chadborn, and I apologize for putting on a tie.
My name is Pam Chadborn. I still have a block now from here, so I believe in affordable, accessible, and sustainable housing in Littleton, but this is not the right spot. Littleton is pretty big, and my vision for Littleton Boulevard is, as it says, neighborhood commercial. That is the mid-century modern that exists there now. After the ULUC was passed, we were, the Historic Preservation Board was told, "Within a year, we will add your historic preservation plan." We didn't have time to get it in, the basic ULUC, but we'll add it within a year. It's four or five years later, and we have no historic preservation plan in the ULUC now. We were promised it within a year. It's not there. Littleton Boulevard's commercial, the mid-century modern, in 2014 was found to be one of the most, five most endangered places in Colorado by Colorado Preservation, Inc. And we have an opportunity there to have design standards for the Boulevard that are commercial, small-scale, human-scale, as it was, and we can add that type of business there. Transportation Mobility Board years ago defined powers as a prospective pedestrian-bicycle corridor. Now, imagine the power of a car-oriented, mid-century modern historic district or overlay district, and then powers as pedestrian bicycle in the side streets that connect them, and what could be done with that over generations? Honestly, it would take decades to build that out, but it would be marvelous for Littleton. And so, I share a lot of the aspirational ideas, but they're not all recognized, realized on Littleton Boulevard. So, Planning Commission, be a Planning Commission. We need to maintain this as neighborhood commercial. It is not a corridor. It doesn't go east. Bellevue is the street, and Mineral are the streets that are the corridors. This is ours. This is Littleton. This is classic Littleton, and we have an opportunity, one in the top three in Colorado, to make it what it can and should be. So, we need affordable housing in other places. We need affordable housing in District 4. SMHO is putting almost everything in one area. The previous public housing, we had, the code at the time required it to be distributed throughout this city. SMHO is not doing that. I want SMHO to succeed, but they're building everything in Lytech all at once, and we lose public ownership of that land. It is a long-term risk to affordable housing to keep building one type of thing in all in one area. So, out of the five things, I do not think it's consistency. Again, commercial is what that area should be, and the intensity is not the point. It should be commercial use. The ag use is historic. And just imagine what we could have done with that kind of concept in historic preservation. It's not compatible. The residences are on the side streets, and all the others are not met either. Please, Planning Commission, think about this. Don't change, don't recommend the rezoning. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Cory Lundock.
Good evening. It's kind of nice to have another Cory in the room. I've been fortunate over the last, I think, six months, three months, to spend three times with Cory, really learning about affordable housing. I've grown up in Littleton. I'm a third-generation Littleton. My family is developers, and I didn't understand what affordable housing was. After our conversation, we went to our board, which is where you now received the letter, where our board did endorse this project. We do feel it is a great use of mixed-use rezoning, but also what we felt was, part of our mission is to create responsible development, and we feel this is a responsible development within the city, building along Littleton Boulevard where you do have bus lanes, where you do have walkability to grocery stores, to retail. It will help the businesses along Littleton Boulevard. We also feel it is a great use of density within the city to have it there on that corridor. So, we were really fortunate to be able to take some of our business owners, some of our board members over and tour Powers Place. We were truly impressed with the staff. They were great with us for over an hour to share the process of how people stay there, how they maintain their leases, I guess is the way it is, how they do the background checks. We just really feel this would be a great project for Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the folks who have signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak who did not get a chance to
Hi, folks. My name's Andrew Shad. I would like to not apologize for my outfit. This is what you get. I live in District 2, about one mile away from the site, and I commute by both the proposed site and also the Powers Park overlook project. I'd like to say that I'm strongly in favor of the rezoning for the project on Littleton Boulevard. Housing-first approach to dealing with the unhoused issue in the metro has been shown time and time again to be the most effective way to combat those problems. I, sorry, I said this already, but I live nearby. I commute by often, and South Metro Housing Options has done an excellent job on the Powers Park overlook. I love walking by there in the evening and seeing all the people out on benches and, you know, talking to one another, and it has integrated so love, or so well into the neighborhood. I really appreciate it. I would also like to point out that that corner of Littleton, kind of the northeast corner of our city, is kind of a sneakily walkable area of the, of the city as a whole, like we always talk about downtown Littleton. But the proximity to King Supers, the proximity to a lot of, you know, fast casual dining options, it, it's actually one of the more affordable, walkable areas because, yes, we all love downtown Littleton, but we're not buying our groceries at La Vaca every week. And so, I think that also is, is a reason that this is great for siting there, just in that it's, we talked, or the Planning Commission talked about the, the traffic projections, and obviously, not going to have that much of an effect on a street like Littleton Boulevard when we're talking about 30 peak-hour trips compared to what the current volumes are on that street. But also, we're talking about an area where theoretically, that, that is an area where we can have households that are going from, that aren't the typical two-car, two-commuter households. So, that's worth considering as well. The only things I would say, and this probably isn't even going to the Planning Commission, but this is more for the city as a whole, is that corner of town is sneakily walkable, but it definitely needs more pedestrian and bike infrastructure to make that more of a reality and a safer reality for everyone who lives there. I know for myself, you know, biking to King Supers is not really an option when the crossing at Littleton Boulevard and, I can't remember the name of the, yeah, Banach. It's just brutal. So, if, if we're gonna, again, strongly in favor, but let's talk about, you know, increasing pedestrian safety along there as well. The other thing, love the preliminary plan, but that is a lot of parking for a small site, and there is a lot of unused parking right next door at Pyramid Liquor. That's, that's a weird ask, but something to consider. There's already parking in the area that might be worthwhile to consider reusing. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else wish to speak regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing at 7:15 PM. And do we have any additional questions or follow-up for staff or the applicant?
Hi, Jan. So, just on the, the funding sort of vein of, or funding sort of thought of questioning, besides the tax credits, is there any other funding source for this, for this particular project?
Yes. So, Lytech is just a portion of the overall funding. Usually, there's a pretty complicated capital stack, and we do have the members of the development team who could probably answer what that layered cake kind of looks like. So, I'll bring up Sarah Burr with South Metro Housing Options to answer your question. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Burr. I'm the Real Estate Development Manager for South Metro Housing Options. I'm the Real Estate Development Manager for South Metro Housing Options. And the, as Alicia said, the, the LITC is one portion, but it is the majority of the funding for a project like this. So we estimate between 70 and 80% of the funding. And it's, it is from the federal government, but it's not a federally funded program. It is an IRS program. And so it is tax credits that are awarded. And so investors invest in that, just to be clear. So it's not like a federal fund that we hear that is being discussed, being talked about getting cut. So we will have, federal funds are scheduled. We have been talking to different entities about funding for the project. That would include from the county. We've been talking with the county, as well as the City of Centennial, as well as the State Division of Housing. And so the State Division of Housing funds are not federal funds. They're local funds, sometimes paid by vendor fees. So a lot of different, also, SMHO, where, South Metro Housing Options is anticipated to put several million dollars into this and leave it in the project. Does that help?
It, it does. Is, are there any secured grants that are in jeopardy or anything like that that could jeopardize the project, things of that nature?
Yes. If we do not get a rezone by July, we will not be able to apply for low-income housing tax credits through CHAFA. They do not accept applications anymore. So LITC.
So they're not gonna?
They won't consider it. If you don't have zoning, they won't consider it. It is, it is a threshold item.
They don't work off of like a one-year cycle or anything like that? There wouldn't be another bite at the apple this later on down the road?
No, not for a year. So it wouldn't be for another year.
So it wouldn't be for another year? It's kind of like C-DOT funding. They have like three-year cycles, things of that nature. So there are, there are time limits in there? There would be other opportunities down the road, if need be?
Yes, one year.
Okay.
I want to caveat that, though. It's a competitive process every time. So the last, last year's LITC round, there were 31 applications across the state. So we're not just competing, Littleton isn't just, they're competing across every jurisdiction in the state of Colorado. So they're incredibly competitive. And so they have other consultants that kind of measure the competitive nature of this application. And so we feel we have a really good shot at winning another award, should the rezoning be in place by our August 1st application.
Was it ever considered to do multifamily residential on this property as opposed to commercial mixed-use? The multifamily, the 74 units per, in 1.482 acres, is 49 units per acre. That is one unit above multifamily residential on per acre. So realistically, if there were three less units, it fits within MFR. And there are, I, I know that the heights are not, the heights in an MFR is 40 feet as opposed to 55. The lot coverage might be an issue because it's 60%, but I'm, I'm assuming that parking, you're probably going to get as many parking credits as you possibly can with this particular project. I just wonder if that was ever a consideration as opposed to commercial mixed-use?
It was. So a couple of things that factored into that is, yes, the bulk standard requirements are a bit more flexible in CM versus MFR. Also, plan support is very clear. The map shows CM as the future recommended zone district and character for this area. So we felt that that, to have an application that had strong plan support was stronger with CM than MFR.
Okay.
Because the other, the other part, too, is we're zoning this for the, we have the intent to, to develop this development. But you, as commissioners, also have to consider, if worse-case scenario happened, what are you left with? Right? And so that, again, goes back to plan support as CM versus MFR.
Yeah. It, it changes it from neighborhood commercial, which is one, there are a few limitations to neighborhood commercial versus CM, as far as what commercial could possibly go in there. But it's, if we, also, if we did go back to MFR, it would guarantee that that would, it would not guarantee it, but it would be, make it, make it more likely that it would be zoned, or more likely that some, a project like this, something like this, would be built at that corner.
Sure. Well, yes and no. So I think the other thing to consider is that South Metro Housing Options is under contract for this land. And MFR was actually seen as a downzone versus CM. And so keeping the land valuation during this transaction is also important to the landowners. So in good faith, MFR was not going to be as a competitive argument.
Sorry, I'm just gonna translate one thing. So according to our architect, MFR doesn't allow for four stories, which is what we need on that site in order to accomplish the number of units that we would like to build there.
Could it be done if it covered more of the lot with less parking, however?
We are parking with all of the reductions that are offered in the code.
How many parking spots are going to be allotted there?
So we are parking, I think, at .89, or .89 parking spaces per unit. And that is code plus IHO plus applicable reduction. So we are parking just above code minimum. I think it'd be .85 at code minimum with the reductions, applicable reductions in code, without having to ask for a variance. Again, the other thing to factor in, just because the code has a code minimum doesn't mean that CHAFA doesn't have a code minimum. So our investors and our lenders want to make sure that this lease is up. And so they have their own parking requirement. And so CHAFA wants this parked at .8.
Okay.
So code allows at a very minimum .85. We're parking around .89.
Yeah. So to a certain degree, the lender is going to determine how much parking you put on to a certain degree, no matter what our number is?
That's correct.
Yeah. To city staff, could we consider, at some point in neighborhood commercial, possibly putting an MFR use? Just for, just for discussion at a later point, just to see what that looks like? Because there's already provisions for townhomes and for, for other types of housing options inside neighborhood commercial?
Yeah. At least, the commission would like us to kind of look into that. Absolutely happy to.
Is this, I don't think it does, because I looked at the map. Does this fall within the transit-oriented development zone that's going to be set out in the next? I think it's, it's basically like a block. It's, it's right on the cutoff, it looked like.
Yes. Yeah, it's just outside of the parking reduction piece of the recent state legislation.
Is there going to be any right-of-way designated, I suppose, requests on Delaware Street? I know that that is one of our bicycle routes, because I know that there are Cheryl's on that street, and that's an extremely narrow street. I didn't know if there were going to be any right-of-way requests to start widening that particular roadway for other types of, you know, multimodal uses?
Yeah. At this time, it hasn't been contemplated. I know the Traffic Impact noted that likely you wouldn't not, we would not need to signal that intersection. But as part of the kind of site plan process, we will be looking at if that is something that would need to occur during it. It just was not evaluated yet for the rezoning process.
Okay. I was thinking more of like what happened at that project up in, what is that, Bannock and Powers, where the right-of-way was, was sort of cut into the project because the, the streets are too narrow for, for what we define as neighborhood connectors or, or local streets and the like. I didn't, I didn't know if that was going to occur with this project or not.
I'm, I'm aware of the Powers Place project, I believe, is what you're referring to. So those details will be analyzed at time of site plan request. And if need be, depending on, you know, some future tax amendments, et cetera, that are being proposed, it will either be a part of the site plan and have administrative plat, or if the tax amendments that we're discussing here in the future do not go through, then it would come before, any right-of-way additional request would come before you as a part of a preliminary plat.
Okay. So it would be during the plating process that that would happen?
If there needs to be a plating process, yes.
This is four different, four different lots? I'm assuming there's going to be a plating process later on?
Yeah. Four or under would be an administrative, as I mentioned, pending a few potential variables.
So realistically, this is probably the only time we're going to see this project because, unless the right-of-way happens. Because this isn't going to follow, fall under an MDP either, because it's, it's too small of a project. Is there anyone here from the city for economic development that can speak to the viability of this particular lot for commercial versus residential? I know it's been vacant for a long time. I think it's been vacant, not vacant, but it's had the one, one unit on it for a very, very long time.
We don't have any economic development staff here tonight, but they did provide comment and some analysis for the staff report and did note that they found that even, even with it being residential, the potential for attainable or workforce-aligned housing, they're in support of that in terms of kind of being able to support businesses. So they found that they were comfortable with supporting this rezoning moving forward. I don't know if a specific kind of number analysis was included, but it was primarily just the kind of support overall for this type of housing.
I saw the support for the housing. I just didn't know if there was any workup as far as like a comparison of, this is a, oh, go ahead, man.
So in the Traffic Impact study, there is a comparison based on what standard, like a standard footprint for a drive-through would be, like 7,500-square-foot building. So it is viable from a commercial standpoint, because all four parcels assembled are just shy of one, one and a half acres.
Yeah. I just didn't know what the sales tax impact would be. I know that you're exempt, the SMHO is exempt from property taxes. Also, all of the tapping fees and the like come from, from the city or the county, probably as a combination. Is it?
So we, they actually do pay tap fees.
Okay.
So I know, I think in the economic report, it said that, that's an error, that's a typo. They do pay tap fees. They do pay a portion of the impact fees. They are able to waive some fees, but not all.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Additional questions for the applicant or staff? Coronado?
Yeah. You mentioned there were two public meetings. I didn't see any notes or summaries in the materials we received. Would you be able to just summarize the kind of feedback that you got at the public meetings?
Yeah. I think there were a lot of questions about low-income housing tax credits, how that works, about residents, how they're selected, tenant selection. There were questions about traffic. And I think there was also concerns about property management. Not, not so much as about the rezoning application itself, but the proposed development. And then also, there were concerns about kind of neighborhood character, which we also, I think Pam spoke on that earlier. That was a comment we received in the second neighborhood meeting. So we did everything we could to answer the questions for, from the community. And we had several members attend both meetings, which was great, and kind of get their questions answered. I think there's just a lot of misinformation about how low-income housing tax credits work and about income-based housing. And so we just had, most of the questions were around that.
Okay, thank you. And, and note to staff, I think it would be helpful if we did have those comments or summaries for our consideration before the meeting. And then this question's for staff. I know there's an ongoing sub-area plan for Littleton Boulevard. And is there enough information or input into that at this point in time to come up with a determination or opinion whether this would be compatible with recommendations? Or is it too early for that?
Yeah. So I would say it's a bit too early within that process. We're still in the kind of contracting process for the consultant. So I do think that this would be a little bit probably early on for kind of moving forward and making decision. The site plan process will likely kind of happen while the plan is being developed. We don't see this being, from a character and context, a major detriment to the corridor to Littleton Boulevard. But we also don't have anything kind of in the code right now that would slow this down. So they're definitely just going through the process as required.
But this site is within the limits of that study, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Any questions down this way?
Sure. Part of the corridor mix definition is that the impacts on surrounding environments are managed by lot and building design. We didn't have that plan as part of our package. And, you know, however preliminary, I was hoping the applicant could speak to just the initial design and how it's responding to the context.
Sure. So I'm going to bring up Adam Cantor with Kepphart, who's our architect.
How are you? My name's Adam Cantor, 2555 Walnut Street, Denver, Colorado. I work for Kepphart. Did you have a specific question about the site plan? I mean, I would caution that we are talking about the rezone. So I can give you some details. It's not very baked. We've got enough put together that we understand it would meet the code standards as described. But things are still in flux. We have enough information to get to CHAFA to ask them for tax credits.
Yeah. If you could, we, we just hadn't seen that plan. Is it possible to pull that back up? Yeah. And just, maybe you can just speak to some of the sort of contextual relationships and how, how you chose to site the building, where it is right here. And, you know, any sensitivities to, to neighbors or to Delaware or Littleton, and what you were trying to address there with the siding?
Sure. Well, so number one, we're trying to get as many units as possible to house as many residents of Littleton as we can. So that's, that's our number-one obligation. Following that, there's access issues. We always need two points of access for life safety. And you can see the ground that we control. And so we're showing those access points, one from Littleton Boulevard and one from Delaware Street. If we cannot provide two points of access, we do not have a project. There's also, based on fire code, those access points need to be a certain distance apart. They cannot be too close together. So it's half the distance of the diagonal is the, is the basic statute. So we've got them as far apart, again, as we can. That leaves little ground for the building and parking, right? So once those parts of the puzzle are in place, we're, we're almost dictated from there as to where the building can go. Beyond that, we really want front doors on, we want windows on streets, building elevations on streets. We want the building itself to address the street in every way possible. That's what Littleton Boulevard is now, for the most part. When you see the office buildings, when you see restaurants, other things. It's not parking in front with the building pushed behind. It's a, it's not a very modern way to lay things out. So by bringing the building to the street, we can create pedestrian-scaled streetscapes along Littleton Boulevard, along Delaware Street. We can have a building access. We can have glass on the corner. We can do certain things that will have that building address its context as opposed to sitting in the back, hiding behind a field of parking, right?
What do you envision at the ground level, the plinth height of the building, on the street? This is a very active, commercial corridor. We're hoping to see become a more active pedestrian and engaged business passageway. What do you see, what do you think is at the ground level, that first floor along Littleton Boulevard?
It's tough to say for sure. Absolutely, there will be residential units.
The doors, the doors, porches?
This is, this is, again, affordable housing, right? So there, we're certainly having conversations about balconies or no balconies. If we give something to one, we have to give it to all. We need to make sure that the project can afford additional resources like that. So most likely, it will not have access to individual units from the street, but there will be project access from the street. This, again, is a very, I want to say crude, but is a very- This again is a very, I want to say crude, but is a very, a very early concept.
So there might be a, a door, an access door.
It does not show, it does not show stairs. It does not show where the, um, ground floor amenity space will be. But on the ground floor, we will have obviously leasing space. We will have, um, community amenity space as well for all of our residents in, in some fashion. I cannot tell you the details of what those will be yet. But so the, we've gone back and forth a little bit between how do we make that address the street? How do we create a jewel on the corner of this building so that, um, it does have pop and that we do have access again for the public, for our residents from again a pedestrian scale?
Thank you. Yeah. All right. Some of these aren't necessarily totally rezoning related. However, um, will you just tell us real quickly, kind of more educational, about your waiting list? Do you have substantial waiting lists for, uh, potential tenants? And then do you have requirements around that for, um, if they work or live in the county, the city, one of the cities? How's that work, real quick?
Um, so the question related to work or live in Littleton requirements, we do not have requirements associated with either of those items. Um, the wait lists are different for each of our programs, so I have several different programs. One is the Lytec program, which has separate waiting lists, and then our, our senior disabled waiting lists and housing choice vouchers. Um, I don't have, to be honest, the number of the Lytec waiting lists right now for overlook at Powers Park, which is senior, so it will be different. I know we have about a hundred and fifty residents, I believe, are applicants. So, um, again, same income range, basically from thirty to sixty, seventy percent AMI.
Okay. I just want a general idea. And also, I think from an educational perspective, um, in, in the presentation, there, there was a mention, I know there's always a, there's an affordability period attached to the funding, but it said fifteen years on one thing, then I heard a thirty. Used to be, I know it used to be, maybe still is thirty years on some types of projects. So can you clarify that, please?
Yeah, the land use, or the, um, yeah, the LURA, the land use re, help me, restriction agreement, thank you.
Okay.
The land use restriction agreement for Lytec deals runs usually at least thirty years. So the compliance period and credit periods are ten and fifteen, but the longer term agreements run at least thirty years. And sometimes there are additional years attached at the end, up to five, ten.
Right, okay.
But thirty for sure to begin with.
Yes, okay, because typically I know it's thirty. So I thought fifteen percent, okay. Um, and so you use deed restrictions or, well, you don't really have to do that because of rentals, right?
No, the, it's a, so the Lytec, a program, so if awarded, we're required to run a deed against the land for that, uh, for, that's the LURA for thirty years.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's part of that tax credit program requirement.
Right, okay. Uh, let's see, on, um, what's, oh, the Littleton Boulevard corridor study that was just asked, um, by Commissioner Coronado, I think, um, is there any preliminary ideas, discussion, plans around, uh, safety, pedestrian access, you know, to deal with Littleton Boulevard? I mean, there was just a mention about, uh, Bannock and trying to get over to the grocery store. You know, it, it is tough. It's a really difficult, um, corridor to, to be able to cross. Has there been any work done on any kind of pedestrian slash bicycle plan?
Yeah, so the city does have, um, the transportation master plan, um, TNP, that it looks at with a lot of its projects, uh, as part of the sub area plan. Um, we are including transportation and looking at pedestrian and bicycle, um, kind of safety and amenities through that corridor. So it will be studied, but I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, um, that the TNP is our like kind of document that we predominantly use. And you may know more on that.
Are there any, um, signaled intersections additional planned at this time along Littleton Boulevard?
Uh, no.
I'm not advocating there be, but I'm just asking.
No, not at this time, no.
Okay.
Um, as, uh, Senior Planner Jason Berry indicated, the study hasn't quite kicked off yet. Once it does, we'll be doing a lot of, um, existing conditions review and then, uh, public engagement to, uh, identify the, you know, potential change locations. Thank you.
All right, and one more question. I was reading through the historic preservation comments about, it, it does appear there's a lot of historic significance with the property. However, if you did pursue federal funding, you have to go through the whole environmental review and historic preservation review and all that jazz. So you did mention, um, that most of the funds, they, they're local funds through the tax credits. Do you foresee using any federal funding?
Yes, I expect we'd use federal funding. So we've already started the NEPA or the, um, the environmental review. Um, we have a consultant that went to, um, to check on the national, if it is eligible for the national registry, which it is not. And then, um, we're working with Historic Littleton, um, to preserve the memory of it through documentation of the home and the outhouses associated with it.
Okay, so the, the thing that kind of caught me was it said if there's, you know, if there is a use of federal funds and that if someone somehow wanted to, uh, preserve that, I guess, or what is, there's a house, is there a shed, uh, that they would need to pay to have that moved. But do you, what are the chances of that happening?
Minimal.
Minimal?
We've talked with Historic Littleton, and they feel that through our documentation, which they are, their historic architect is working with our architects, to make those plans, that is satisfactory to them. And so to, the cost to pick up and move that home is, yeah, it's not anticipated in our budget.
No, but I just, you know, wouldn't want, I mean, that was mentioned, and then for something like that to kind of throw the whole project off the rails because you have a window of opportunity with the funding, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay, all right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Um, if I might, um, are you, in this project, I know you said you've got parking minimums from CHAFA. Sorry, can you tell me what CHAFA is?
Oh, the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. So they're the state agency that allocates the tax credits and manages the low-income housing tax credit program for Colorado.
Okay, so you've got a parking minimum associated with them, and then the parking minimum associated with the city. Are you limited, I guess, in terms of, um, adding more units because of the required parking minimums?
Yes. So we, from this, from the city, uh, we are. We are limited on the number of units we can deliver based on the parking code. So, um, in comparison, um, the city of Denver parks affordable housing at point one space per unit. Um, there will be getting rid of all parking minimums in, um, in July. Um, so this will enable a lot more affordable housing. Uh, there are ways to get around kind of CHAFA's minimum, right? So all lenders for any kind of project have their own kind of formula, right? For parking that they like to see typically with CHAFA, there's a little bit more flexibility. We can provide a parking study to negotiate their minimum down, but, uh, we can't, we don't really have a vehicle to lower our parking requirement here, um, beyond code minimum without, uh, I think a variance or a public process, so, which risks the schedule. So we have twelve months. If we're awarded the credits in November, we have twelve months to design and permit a building.
Yeah, okay.
So it is a race, and so anything that, uh, that jeopardizes that schedule, like a variance, um, we tend to be very risk averse. So we will usually just park to code, um, to not have that, uh, potential delay or risk to the project.
Sure. Um, so, uh, not a question for you then, just a comment maybe for staff to consider going forward, um, would be to try to source some data from car to affordable and south metro housing options in terms of what their true parking minimums are and get that into our code. Because they know better than we do, I think, what they truly need, how many of their people actually own cars. Um, I, I know I did read something about, you know, there's certain affordable housing where no parking is provided, and for people who may be living in their cars, that's a big thing to ask them to give up. So I'm not saying they shouldn't have any parking, obviously, um, but I think they know better than we do. And I think that might be something that we should revisit in the future would be to get a better number from the people who know best.
So from what you just said about the timeline, you'll, will you be designing the building and working with city staff before the December award notification so that you have that design? You'll wait until December to begin the design process in full with staff?
Um, yes, because they have to pay their consultant team. So, um, that's a huge risk, right? So to pay the consultants, to pay architects, civil engineers, structural engineers, MEP, landscape architects, um, to design a building, to do what we call schematic design at risk is, is, um, you know, a half a million dollar exercise plus. So, um, we, what we see is wait till award and then kick off the design process, and then it's just a fast, it's a fast process. But that's how every affordable housing development is designed and delivered in Colorado, in twelve months or less. Or, I'm sorry, designed and permitted. Construction doesn't move that fast. We wish.
All right, let's see, and no additional questions from members of the commission? I'll ask for a motion.
I will go ahead and move to approve PC Resolution 052025 recommending approval to the city council to rezone, uh, 439 and 589 West Littleton Boulevard and two parcels directly north and east of 439 West Littleton Boulevard from neighborhood commercial to corridor mixed.
We have a motion by, uh, Member Coronado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all men. Any discussion or comments? We'll start down here.
Thank you, Chair. Um, first, Alicia and team, and Sarah and team, thank you for the presentation. Lots of good information on the project. Um, I feel you gave it a very good overview. Uh, I share Commissioner Neely's concern about, and others, about the way this is going to interact with the Boulevard. I want to underscore to our staff that given that we are embarking on a Littleton Boulevard plan, planning process, that this will to some degree overlap that process. And because by all appearances, we, the commission, will no longer be viewing this once this zoning decision is made, that you will be the, the only and frontline source of, of connecting the Littleton Boulevard planning process to the outcomes in this building. And I would say this is a significant building along the Boulevard. It is a four-story building amidst some very low-rise structures on both sides of the street and, and next door and other contexts. So, um, first, my first comment is to really tell you that one of the challenges and the things we hear from the citizens is that because we turn over a great deal of the actual site approval process to administrative reviews within your department, it's really essential that that be good. You know, that, that you take as much as you can from, and I'm going to say that our concerns to the architect about its engagement of the street and its relationship to building, because I share the business's interest in having more people on that corridor. But I also don't want them all to be going out a doorway to the parking lot and never visiting and being, like, if, if you lived there, it should be comfortable and easy to go out on foot to, to King Supers and not think, oh, I gotta go back and around a parking lot and to those side driveways. Those kind of design decisions, which you will impact, we will no longer have a say in, are critical to this being received well by the neighbors, the community in the future. And, and the perception of the community of low-income housing is a powerful force in continued approval and funding for it. So they're all interrelated and important things for everybody at SMHO as well. I want to underline those concerns. I do not, I really hope we do not have a four-story building with a locked facade on two streets rising four floors. I mean, that's, you know, with just one doorway or no doorway that isn't really used by the residents. Maybe, we had a, a comment from someone that talked about overlook at Powers Place being a wonderful, with, with residents coming outside and being on the street. You know, I asked about front stoops, maybe the building setback, maybe there's a way for the residents can be, to be out in the front of the building. I don't know. But that kind of engagement, again, makes buildings and their perception positive among the neighbors, and that has, it redounds to all future projects and all support for this kind of stuff. So I'm just raising that particularly to Sarah and Jared on this. Beyond that, uh, the presentation really hit a number of, I, I, I share the applicant's, uh, description that this meets a number of our comprehensive plan goals, particularly policy, housing and neighborhoods policy HNN1, which is to encourage an array of residential options within the city. And also policy HNN2, which is that public and private partners consider the entire spectrum of tools to assist people in attaining their ownership or rental goals, et cetera, et cetera. That's, I'm very, I think it's an important policy statement in our comprehensive plan, and this project meets that. The land use and character goal, LNC2, which is a focus on the long-term fiscal sustainability of the city in direct connection to its land use, is also, I know we're going to lose the, the property tax income from this parcel when this project is built, but we will no doubt gain significant sales tax increases by the residents. Residents, residences provide, the purchases of people in residences provides a huge amount of sales tax gains. Each individual, every Amazon purchase you make comes every time you go shopping. So those are, those are big gains, I think, fiscally. Uh, and then housing and neighborhoods policy HNN1 is very well satisfied. HNN1 says we are to encourage an, an array of residential options within the city through new development, redevelopment, and maintaining the housing stock to respond to the need for varying housing types. And low-income rentals is definitely a positive contributor to that. So, uh, I'm a thumbs up on the project. I really appreciate the business community and, uh, neighbors and people coming in support of this. I will be supporting the motion.
Sure. Yeah, I think Patrick makes, uh, a, a great point about, um, addressing Littleton Boulevard. Um, if this were a commercial, um, development, it would have some component that addresses the street, and we have no guarantee that we're not going to end up with, uh, two blank facades, uh, you know, along the two major, uh, not major, but the streets that it's addressing. Um, but I also agree that, you know, just generally that this is consistent and compatible with the surrounding zoning context and, uh, that the additional residents will inherently activate Littleton Boulevard and, uh, encourage further commercial and mixed use by, by that activation. Um, but I, it's tempting to put a caveat that it has to, uh, access, you know, have, have some access directly to the street and not just, um, the, you know, the northwest parking, but, uh, in general, in support of the project. Or the change in use.
Yeah, being that we have a, a, uh, sub-area plan in the works and the hope at least of a corridor study at some point on this particular roadway, um, this, this feels a little bit cart before horse, a little bit. Um, which it, it unfortunate, it's just unfortunate timing, I suppose, is what it really is. And, um, yeah, I think the project itself is definitely worth pursuing, absolutely. Um, I, uh, there are fairly substantial swaths of Littleton Boulevard that are already zoned, commercial mixed used, that surround this. Um, I, I would say that from the, you can't hold the, uh, cart before horse argument against the applicant. That's, that's, that's an us problem. Um, a, a little, the city Littleton problem that we probably should have had these corridor studies done already, um, and the like. Uh, but I think- But I think from consistency and compatibility from the zoning, just considering that other chunks of Littleton Boulevard are zoned like this, it's, it's a yes. Traffic-wise, I think this is probably the least traffic you're going to get of any use on this. I, I don't think we're going to, this is going to overload our sewer system or anything like that. The one thing I would question is, is on-street parking considered a public facility? And I know, nobody can answer that right now because we're past all of everything. But, because there's no definition of it, at least that I could find in the code, as to what a public facility is. And then the last part of the natural environment, it's, we're going to pave over something, but when are you not, I suppose? So based off of the criteria that we have to judge this by, I will be in support of this project. And that's that.
Okay, yeah, just want to echo, I think, the thank you to city and the applicant for your presentations. I think you've done a very good job with this. I also do appreciate the comments from the local business chamber and the local businesses. It is definitely a thing to remember that if our local businesses cannot attract and retain the talent they need, that hurts us all as a city as well. And with the rises in housing costs, we could be doing a great detriment to our local businesses, our local and small businesses, if we don't try to look forward to how to free up more affordable housing opportunities. But more, more to the point probably is that, yeah, it's definitely consistent, I think, with what's on Littleton Boulevard. If you look just, you know, and then plus, I think with the upcoming powers, I know we looked at the platform at that, the resident, or the senior living, I think that's supposed to go in just a block north of there. Other moderate to, you know, mid-sized apartment complexes, or, you know, large shopping centers. So all of that fits with that future land use plan for commercial mixed use. It, traffic, yeah, again, I think I've looked, last time I looked at Littleton Boulevard traffic counts, it suggests that Littleton Boulevard is still below traffic counts that are eligible for two-lane roads. So your traffic impact is obviously negligible, given that the road is already over, well over capacity. It's in an as-built area already, so again, you're tapping into existing public facilities. And I think one of the things about the natural environment is that you are giving people access to, you know, they're, they're just a block off of parks. So rather than, you know, I think, I think this is a great use for that. I don't see anything as far as the criteria for rezoning this that you're not meeting. One of the things, just again, regarding design decisions, I know there are limitations on what you can do with your, with your building. I don't know if something like a preschool or a community co-op or something like that could be used and even run or, you know, part of, you know, for the benefit of residences, residents at the ground level, both for the residents of this building and for maybe neighborhood, nearby neighborhood residents that would still fit with that use, that would give us that open interaction with the, with the street, with the Boulevard. So I don't know if that's possible, but that might be something to consider that would keep in line with both the, that corridor planning and also maybe what your residents need on that front too. So I think everything else has probably been echoed pretty well by everybody else. So again, yeah, I'll be in support of this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks to the applicant for putting forth a good rezoning application and for staff for guiding them through the process. Did have some challenges with this proposal, mainly that a rezone here not only lessens the capability or potential for commercial retail, sales tax, and so on, but also increases the allowable density, reduces the open space requirements and other things. It's, it does, significant concessions are being made here, but I think for a good purpose for, to develop a higher density of affordable housing. It is a parcel within a corridor, so I think that context is important to consider moving forward. I'm a little concerned about the precedent it sets for neighboring parcels that are zoned NC now. But I think this is a unique case and I, I think that my support for that is contingent on the fact that it does provide affordable housing. If somebody was to come in and say, hey, South Metro, you know, we want to buy this parcel. It's been rezoned and we're going to do something else with it, that's not, not okay. But, you know, I find the argument that the need for affordable housing is compelling, especially to support people that work in Littleton and want to live here as well. I think we're a welcoming community and we hope to have more folks. The, and with that, I'll just say that I'm in support of this rezoning application.
I, I think everything that I would, my concerns and not just concerns, but the positive aspects of the project have been mentioned. Typically, I am not extremely supportive of converting a commercial site into a residential. However, I think, given all the housing goals that this project will meet and the need that it will serve, that, again, I support that, you know, we could, on this, in this instance, take a different direction. So I, I share the same concerns about, you know, my first look at that, and I realize it's preliminary, but a site plan that has a building that's just like, you know, wall, solid wall, is concerning. So what help as you work through that design process, that you'll find some creative ways to make that attractive and to make it welcoming and also accessible in terms of really utilizing the other amenities that are along Littleton Boulevard for the residents who live there, because everything's there along Littleton Boulevard, including grocery shopping. So in, in that context too, it's a great location in terms of there is a lot of availability of needed services that can be walked to, so that's, or ridden a bike to, or whatever, using wheels for, so, other than car wheels. Anyway, so from that perspective, I'm very supportive. Happy to see a project come through that does meet a lot of the affordable housing goals that we have been working on and sharing for the last few years. Because honestly, we might have many, to be honest, so. And I, I always love the leveraging of all kinds of funds and resources in order to make something possible like this type of development. So thank you, and I support it.
All right, and I appreciate all the work that staff and the applicant have put into this, as well as the folks who came out to speak on this. I know there are other things to do on Monday evenings. So appreciate everybody's participation. And one thing that, and also appreciated Commissioner Santana, working through the goals and policies in the, in our comprehensive plan. And one thing that I also appreciated was the applicant pointing out that this is designated as a corridor mixed character area in our comprehensive plan document. And they are seeking corridor mixed zoning here, which does, although they have a specific project in mind, it does allow a variety of commercial retail office uses as well as the residential. Not that I, I fully expect this will go forward if, if they receive zoning approval from the city council. But the, the context is that this zoning will apply to whatever user ends up with it, and I find it appropriate for this area. So with that, I will be activating the voting system.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And are we good to continue on to the next item? Just checking. All right. So the next item on the agenda is PC Resolution 02-2025, which is recommending approval to city council of code text amendments to Title 10, the Unified Land Use Code related to accessory dwelling units. We will have staff acting as applicant as the presenter this evening.
Chair Reynolds, if I may, just one minute while we switch staff around. We'll be with you in a second. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just, we are working on getting a slightly amended presentation on for you guys. It was noticed late that there was a little bit of a misordering of the slides, so we just wanted to present that to you in the correct order.
Do you need a five-minute recess to get that in order? We can, yes. So we'll call a five-minute recess. We will be back at, oh, 8:13 PM while staff gets the PowerPoint together.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, welcome back from our five-minute recess. We do have a quorum at the dais. Next public hearing item on the agenda is, as I mentioned, PC Resolution 02-2025 recommending approval to City Council of Code Text Amendments to Title 10, the Unified Land Use Code, related to accessory dwelling units. And as I mentioned, we have a staff presentation, and they are acting as the applicant this evening. So we'll proceed with that if staff is ready.
Yes, thank you, Council. And in this presentation, in addition to Resolution 02-2025, we will also be presenting 03-2025 simultaneously as well.
Would you like me to announce the full title of that?
If you would, yes, please. Thank you.
We'll be having a combined presentation as well on Item C, 7C on the agenda, which is PC Resolution 03-2025 recommending approval to City Council of a Code Text Amendment to Title 10, the Unified Land Use Code, related to the 2024 legislative updates. So ADUs and the 2024 legislative updates.
Thank you. So as discussed, we will be talking tonight about, first about the ADUs, which do come partially from the state legislative session in 2024, but also some opportunities that staff has identified to further our own goals for the city. And then we will also be discussing the residential occupancy limitations, non-functional turf, and minimum parking, which all do come from that 2024 legislative session. First up, we have ADUs, House Bill 24-1152. The state here has set out with a list of objectives. You know, and those objectives include, for the allowance of ADU statewide, which includes helping stabilize cost burdens for households, as well as allowing for intergenerational living and aging in place. While this update is largely driven by the state legislation, staff was asked in 2023 by City Council to explore reducing burdens for ADU construction. And staff does find that a lot of the goals that the state has are also aligned with our own goals in Envision Littleton, the city's comprehensive plan. And those include increasing housing attainability and opportunities for older residents to age in place. The state legislation requires all municipalities to allow for the construction of ADUs wherever a single-family detached home is permitted, and places strict limits on the restrictions that may be applied. And again, staff would like to emphasize that prior to the 2024 state legislative session, the city of Littleton was looking for ways to reduce those barriers of construction for ADUs in order to help residents with any issues that they may have, whether it be costs or aging in place. First, we have the legislative requirement from the state to remove the requirement of new parking for ADUs. And the text amendment does comply with that. The state does allow for very narrow instances for parking minimums to be applied to the new construction of ADUs. And that language has also been applied here. But overall, we are seeing... It is likely that the city will be seeing a reduction in parking for ADUs as these are constructed. The state legislation also requires that municipalities remove restrictive design standards that are not otherwise applied to single-family detached homes. And the text amendment complies with this by removing design requirements such as door placements and materials that would not be applied to a single-family home, as well as removing the restriction that detached ADUs be built on lots that have alley access. In addition to compliance with state legislation, this code has also tried to find, or this update has tried to find some ways to simplify and to make our text a little bit more legible to applicants as well as to staff. And one of the ways that we found to do that is to actually condense our ADU types. We have three types of ADUs, attached, contained, and detached. However, as you can see from the table on the screen, the attached and contained actually have the same standards. And so staff is proposing to move forward with just an attached type and condensing those two, attach and contain ADU types. Moving beyond the legislative requirements, staff has also proposed two amendments to further reduce barriers to ADU construction. The first is to increase the maximum size allowed from 750 square feet per state legislation to 1,000 square feet... Sorry, to 1,000 square feet for all detached ADU types. And on the screen here, we did pull a floor plan of a 1,000-square-foot ADU, where you can see the potential for layouts here. It does include two bedrooms, as well as one and a half bathrooms. I did want to mention, we did hear quite a bit about the size in our public comments. Our code currently does allow for a range, depending on which zone district you're in, from 700 square feet for MLR... I believe it's actually SLR. And 800 square feet for MLR. So those, we do already have a range. You could split the difference and get 750 square feet. But, you know, in planning, we've spoken with a lot of applicants that are looking for some flexibility for ADUs in order to meet their needs, whatever those might be. And while 1,000 square feet might seem fairly large, we do, staff has done the research in that it does kind of match up with what a two-bedroom apartment that's being constructed in the temper metro area is. And we would also like to call out that while 1,000 square feet might be the max permitted per code, there are also different, there are also other limiting factors for construction on a lot. And for ADUs, we would find that the maximum building coverage would really be one of the largest limiting factors here. Staff is also proposing to allow for an ADU to be constructed up to the height of the zone district that it is in. While we understand that that has not been the practice typically outside of our downtown zone districts, where there is an allowance for an ADU to extend four feet beyond, we found that this is very limiting, particularly for our smaller lots, where a house might have a detached garage, and somebody is just looking to build up on top of that detached garage. However, if you have a single-family home, you are unable to do that. And you would need to take up either more of your yard space in order to accommodate that, if it's even possible. And we don't have many examples of these, but we have had one application come in that we thought really illustrates this point. So here you can see, we had a proposal to construct an ADU on top of a garage, on top of an existing detached garage. This would have resulted in an ADU that was 26 feet and 4 inches, whereas the primary dwelling was 25 feet and 10 inches. According to code, it must be subordinate to the primary structure, which is includes, that is, the floor, the square, overall square footage, as well as the height of the structure. And it limits your, the possibilities of what you can do with your own property. And we find that particularly for, really more of the core part of the city, our downtown, as well as older SLR and MLR lots, that are really constrained in size, that this is quite a large barrier to construction. And finally, we did want to touch on buffer yards. This was something that staff had proposed to reduce for detached ADUs that are being proposed on top of existing accessory structures, such as garages in the example before. However, there were two things. The first is, after some, you know, deeper dive in the code, we did find that, under the constrained sites, we do believe that you can already achieve that reduction of a buffer yard. So for many, most properties in the city will have a fence. You know, that fence can be, your buffer yard with the fence can be reduced from five feet to seven and a half feet if the application of a buffer yard does, it creates impractical development on the lot. But staff was also proposing to allow for a reconfiguration of plantings, where a buffer yard was required from trees to shrubs. However, we did hear quite a bit from the community about some concerns about visual impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. And so staff has actually struck that recommendation. And we wanted to, buffer yards can feel very nebulous, and it's difficult to explain even for us when we are talking about it as staff. So we wanted to be able to show people what it is that we're talking about. So here we have a lot where you have a primary dwelling and an existing garage. This primary dwelling is a one-story. The existing garage would also be a one-story. But if you wanted to add an ADU on top, assuming that would be permitted, you would have to have, it's very possible that you would have to install a buffer yard. So with that constrained site, you would be able to reduce that buffer yard from seven and a half feet, which is that hatch area that you see, to, up to the five-foot side setback, which is that purple line. And then in the instance of new construction, you would have to comply with the buffer yard as it is written in the code, with that seven and a half feet. So if you are proposing to build straight, a new construction onto the setback, it would not be possible if a buffer yard was required. Moving on from ADUs, we do have three other legislative items that we will go over tonight. The first is the occupancy limits of House Bill 24-1007. This one was just simply that jurisdictions may not determine occupancy limits based on familial relation. The city was actually very ahead of the state on this one, and in 2021 struck our definition of family. The city still does limit occupancy according to health and safety, which is permitted in the bill. However, there was one carryover as they related to mobile homes, which stated that no more than one family may resign in a manufactured home unit. And staff is striking that language to be compliant with the bill. Next, we have the non-functional turf bill, SB 24-005. And again, here, the state has set out with some of their objection, objectives as it relates to the environment and, the natural environment and the built environment, as well as some climate impacts that we may be expecting from those impacts. And again, staff finds that this is pretty in line with what we, what we have set out in Envision Littleton. This non-functional turf bill does not allow for the new installation of turf, including artificial turf and invasive species, on non-residential properties, and exempts residential property from this, residential property is exempted from this bill. To comply with this, staff has created two new definitions, one for non-functional turf. And that mostly states that turf is, non-functional turf is turf that is installed for aesthetic reasons and includes artificial turf and invasive species. It also restricts plantings in medians, and again, is only applied to non-residential properties. And then we have functional turf, which includes all turf that is used to recreate on and includes parks and sports fields. And within the code, we have also made some additional amendments to make clear, again, where the functional versus non-functional turf is applied. Finally, we have the minimum parking bill, HB 24-1304. The intent of this bill is largely aimed at reducing the cost of construction. Parking can be quite a cost, I think, as we heard in the previous presentation, and really limit the amount of units that can be put into a building. But also, there are some environmental impacts, positive environmental impacts from reducing that paved surface. Staff also finds that some of the goals that are listed out in this state bill can also be found, again, within Envision Littleton. On the screen, you'll see the applicable transit area map on the left, and where this is being applied within the city, it does include the entirety of the Broadway corridor, the majority of downtown, going north on Federal Boulevard, and then just right at the corner of Mineral and Santa Fe, at the mineral station. This bill does require the removal of minimum parking for multi-family, mixed-use, multi-family, and adaptive reuse projects that are located near a high-frequency transit stop. The state has really left it to the cities to define multi-family. The city defines it as five or more. And in discussion with Planning Commission and City Council at the joint study session in March, we did identify an opportunity to expand the exemption from multi-family to all residential developments that are located within that map area. And I just wanted to, again, reemphasize where this bill is exempting minimum parking. It's largely in zone districts that are very permissive and allow for a wide range of housing types, including, again, our downtown, as well as CM zone districts. Expanding the exemption to all residential types will help incentivize less dense development. Whereas in the downtown, we might have some areas that really struggle to meet parking requirements. You know, if it were to be a four-unit townhome. But if you decided to make a five-unit apartment, you are suddenly exempt from those parking minimums. And so that exemption really helps level out the playing field for all developers. And to comply with this, staff has amended the parking table in compliance with state legislation. And again, has also expanded that exemption to all residential developments that are located within the applicable transit area. This text amendment also has removed sections that refer to parking reduction bonuses for transit stations that are located in that mapped area, very specifically, the Littleton Downtown Station and the Mineral Station, as those areas no longer have parking minimums, according to state legislation. Tonight, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Resolutions 02-2025 and 03-2025 to the City Council.
All right. Thank you. Are there any initial questions for staff before we move on to the public comment portion? Not seeing any, so I will open the public comment portion on both PC Resolution 02-2025 and PC Resolution 03-2025 at 8:32 PM. And I'll just remind the Planning Commission that these are two separate items. However, we will be accepting testimony on both of them at this time. We'll need two separate motions once it comes back to us. Is there anyone signed up? We have nobody signed up to speak regarding ADUs or the legislative updates? Anyone in the audience like to speak regarding these items? Certainly, please.
My name is Pam Chatburn. I live block and a half from here in downtown. And first, I'm going to say, I don't think it's correct to combine public comment for both of these. They were listed separately on the agenda.
Would it make a difference if I offered you six minutes?
I don't think that that was publicly noticed 24 hours in ahead of time. But you can see that the comments in the packet are overwhelmingly negative about most of these. So let me just kind of mention a few things. The parking, the ADUs with no minimum parking requirement is not going to work. I said at council, feasibility first. How many infill redevelopments can we make without added parking until on-street parking is full? That's never been done. It was never part of the ULUC. No analysis is behind the ULUC. So where is the cutoff limit at which the city really dies because there isn't parking for the uses that we've built in? So we can't redevelop any other spots there. I guarantee you that we're going to reach that. And so, to me, that's a nonstarter and shouldn't be approved. There's a claim that there's no parking problem downtown, and that's false. Littleton's character is suburban. And one of the items that draws people to Littleton is the ease of parking. I'm also going to point out, again, for accessibility, you want parking near whatever you're using. And so the concept that you can park four blocks away works for a certain segment of the population, but not for residents. This is not for ADUs. This is absurd in its feasibility. For administrative approval, no. I don't care the size of the ADU. The neighbors deserve to be noticed. This is going to impact their lives, especially on small lots. With a high structure next door to you, if it blocks your sun, you're going to have ice and snow removal issues. And your property, people literally look down on you. The small lots are the first people who should be notified. This should not be administrative. The neighbors should always be notified. It's appalling that the staff's presentation talks about, let's make it easier for developers, the builders, whatever, and not the neighbors. Over and over, I, just the basis of the assumptions behind the staff's presentation is, what can we do to build more? There is nothing about the city, and you are supposed to be responsible for planning. Where do we break? Where does this extra parking and all of the on-street parking and the neighborhood impacts, where does it break? You don't know. It hasn't been presented. I don't know. But a lot of us are skeptical and feel that it's broken now. I'm really sorry that there's not time to talk about everything, but I noticed the placing the impact of some of these along Broadway and downtown, but not other areas of town, is just, it definitely... is just, it definitely impacts people based on their income or area where they live. And I think that's wrong. I also just wanted to mention, the concept that any of these reduce heat island effects is nonsense, because if you increase densification, you're going to increase urban heat island. There's more to say, but I really, this disgusts me, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Certainly.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our city. Kurt Samuelson, South Cedar Street, District 3. I'd like to address the maximum square footage allowed for ADU of 1,000 feet. As a former Littleton Planning Commissioner, a 40-year veteran of the home finance industry, and a current member of the Metro Denver Home Builders Association, my belief is that these homes, along with the ADU, will eventually become rental properties. All of them will be rented at market rates. Landlords and home builders will want to maximize their return on investment. A 1,000-square-foot addition could allow up to three-bedroom apartments, albeit small bedrooms. With three bedrooms, there could easily be three to five adults living in the ADU, creating the possibility of an additional three cars parking on the street in front of the ADU or the adjacent neighborhood homes. This puts an undue burden on the other homeowners in the neighborhood. I suggest you make an amendment to maximize the square footage of 850 square feet, which would certainly allow for a two-bedroom apartment. There are plenty of those in the city, and you can look it up. 850 will reduce the concern for parking issues and quite possibly keep the unit more affordable. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding ADUs or the turf reductions, parking, et cetera? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of both PC Resolution 02-2025 and PC Resolution 03-2025. Any members of the commission have questions for staff?
I thought that I had read in the state assessment of this was basically that the setbacks for these are based off of whatever our accessory dwelling, or our accessory setbacks are, period. I didn't know if it was set to a number or if it's set to what whatever ours is. So, I mean, could we, in theory, change it to get a bigger setback?
So the state does allow for a minor amount of flexibility, but does state it is either the rear, it's the rear setback for accessory structures, or five feet, whichever is less. And I would also state that our, for detached accessory dwelling units, our current standards are five feet for the rear.
Okay. What's the minimum distance it has to be away from the house? Is it five feet for fire code?
Five feet.
I would, for the parking, the one that has to do with the DOLA map, I would appreciate a link to the DOLA map in our code, if that's possible. It's, I had to, I had to actually dig on DOLA's website for at least a little bit of time. It wasn't like absurd, but it was like, it took me a little bit to find the map we were looking at.
We certainly could. It gets difficult linking to external sources, not necessarily because of the software, but because those links change, and that link in particular has already changed. So it is, it is difficult. Staff does have that data on our own internal maps. We can certainly look to kind of making that more external-facing for the GIS map that we do have linked on ours, rather than linking it to DOLA.
With an attached ADU, the biggest difference between that and a duplex, per se, is basically the deed restriction. Is that going to be really the biggest difference? Because they can be the same size. So it's a matter of which one's the main and which one's the subordinate. But realistically, we can't deed, or the ADUs are deed-restricted to one lot, as opposed to a duplex would be sliced into two lots?
Correct. So you would not be able to have separate ownership. Even if it were to be condo-plotted, that deed restriction, it does run with the primary dwelling.
I know you use the example in here of someone who's going to be at 26 feet or what have you on their garage. Under the state's mandates, does it, that would have been able to build, been built, correct? Because it basically is whatever the, whatever the, whatever the housing, the single-family home application is, it's the same to all of the structure, all of the ADUs on the, on the, on the property, correct?
If I'm understanding the question correctly, so in regards to height, the state does appear to be pretty deferential to municipalities, but the height is one thing that staff has proposed through this process as a way of, again, just reducing those, those code barriers to construction for ADUs. However, if it were to be strictly compliance, I do believe that we could restrict the height of the ADU to the height of the primary.
So in theory, I could have a two-story home with a thousand-square-foot footprint, two-story home behind it, which would effectively make two 2,000-square-foot building, I mean, 2,000-square-foot building if I could go up two stories, right? Is that how I'm hearing that? If I have, if I have a, just a, just a house on a lot, and I can put, I can put a footprint of 1,000 square feet in the backyard, side yard, whatever, it can go up to the height of the, of the zoning district, so it could be two stories.
Not at a thousand, so it would be 1,000 square feet total.
1,000 square, so, okay. Okay, so it's restricted total, it's not just the footprint. It's the 1,000-square-foot total. So if I had 500 square feet to work with, I could build a second level to put another 500 square feet on top of it?
You could.
Under, under what we have proposed right now, right?
Right.
Be 250 square feet probably per level, so.
If I wanted to maximize the 1,000, though, I could do 500 on top of 500.
Sure.
Just, just for frame of reference, my first townhome was 1,000 square feet. That's, that's kind of what I'm basing this off of. The state's requirement is 750 square feet, correct? If I'm, that was in the presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Just, okay, cool. I'm done.
Commissioner Roethlisberger.
Just one quick question. I think you said the building, the height restrictions are the same as the neighborhood standards, right? And I know in some areas of the code, there's restrictions on height standards associated with what your neighbor's house are, right, and the average height. So that apply, that same height restriction, it's not just maximum overall height, it's also, it also takes into account surrounding.
It does, and that's when the buffer yard kicks in, so it's the contextual standards. If you are 115, if you're proposing to go 115% over the total height of your adjacent neighbors, then you would have to have that type A buffer yard installed. So it doesn't necessarily limit how high you can go, but there are additional requirements for development, looking to, you know, if you're exceeding that 115%.
Understand. Okay, yeah, because I, I was pretty sure that was the case, but I just wanted to make sure that, because just in case it wasn't clear for folks, that, that, you know, you're not, you're not going to have a whole bunch of, you know, single-story houses, and then somebody's allowed to build, you know, a two-story ADU because your whole neighborhood is, has a maximum height of 30 feet, right? So you're not going to have this one random giant structure that gets thrown in there. It's still going to be subject to the rest of the buildings around it, so. Transit, the transit area map, that's out of our control?
Yes.
Yeah, those are, yeah, no, only, those are my only questions. Thank you.
Yeah, just a few questions, just for clarification and confirmation. So I heard 750 is the state requirement for ADU minimum size. Currently, our ADUs in Littleton are allowed up 800 square foot maximum, not 850. So. In MLR, right? And smaller in SLR, as I recall. And also, the parking minimums, currently, currently, there are none, but it's only in, in transit TOD areas, I believe, currently?
For ADUs?
For AD, ADU parking minimums.
We.
Currently.
So currently, we do have parking minimums that are applied for ADUs. It's one off-street parking, and the state does have a very narrow car valve. I believe the three criteria for staff to be able to apply a parking space for a newly constructed ADU would be that minimum parking was required for that lot at the time, that that parking already exists on-site, and that on-street parking is not available, as in it is a no-street-parking street, not necessarily about the absorption.
I would say, generally speaking, the new legislation doesn't allow us to require on-street, off-street parking, except for in kind of some specific situations.
Okay, okay. And in your experience or research, is there a correlation between the ADU unit size and the number of vehicles that a resident would necessarily have?
From some high-level research, staff has not found any correlation with ADU, ADU size, or really in the impact to street parking with the construction of ADU in a neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. I actually have a question right now. So I spotted in the code that the measurement is edge of eaves to property line. Is that the same typical measurement for setbacks for primary structures?
Yes.
I'd have to double-check if it's edge of eave or edge of wall.
Yeah, and if it is different, the follow-up would be why the distinction? Because that could become relevant for many accessory structures, which are built, you know, probably five feet from the property line with an eve extending into that setback.
Are you, Chair, are you proposing that it be consistently applied, that if it's walls for a single, for the original home, that it also be the same for the ADU?
Well, I'll see what the answer is. Defer judgment.
I, I'd like to ask the county attorney about the home rule, being a home, and what that was mentioned in the hearing, and can municipalities not comply with the state mandates? And if so, which ones? And if not, why not?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, I know Mr. Bagley kind of put some of this on your radar. I have been a strong advocate for home rule authority throughout my tenure here with the city of Littleton and before with the city of Arvada. So I've always kind of been a proponent for letting local land use decisions come locally. We have, as a body or City Council, we have pushed back on some of these state mandates, not because necessarily they may not be good ideas, but because it is a violation of home rule municipal authority, our ability to make our own determinations as to what is appropriate and where it is appropriate and when it's appropriate, how it's appropriate within our city. So I am a strong proponent for home rule authority. To answer the question, I generally don't like to advise folks to violate state law. And to Ms. Chadbourne's comments, or some of her comments, you know, one of the things that she had spoken to was, you know, the administrative approval of this. This is something that state law is, is saying that we're required to do. So this isn't something that our planning department is coming up with and trying to make it so that the public has no say in this. This is what the legislation says. So to answer the question again, you know, I've talked with a lot of my peers in terms of what it is that they're doing, and we're kind of all over the board. You know, Denver has recently, specifically with ADUs, they've kind of come sort of into compliance, but not all the way into compliance with state law. There are other jurisdictions that just aren't going to do anything and wait for someone to quote-unquote sue them. Is that going to be the state? I don't think so. Could that be a property owner who wants to come in and do something that is technically allowed by state law, that technically, according to state law, municipalities need to adopt, and they're not being allowed to do it? That's a possibility as well. If you'll recall, with a lot of these state mandates on the land use front that have come down in recent years, a lot of it kind of, its genesis is from Senate Bill 213, and that was a few years ago. And at the time, Senate Bill 213 had a lot of these ADUs density, all of it was packaged all together, and it ultimately failed. At that time, though, one of the things that Senate Bill 213 was quote-unquote threatening with the cities was taking away their HUTF funds, so highway user tax funds, which was creating a lot of alarm and concern for cities. Here in Littleton, I mean, it's a sizable amount of money that comes in by way of, you know, your tax on gasoline and your, your car registration fee. So it's about 1.6, 1.7 million dollars that comes into the city. So in terms of, you know, what could happen if the city didn't comply with the mandates? I don't know. Either we risk litigation from the state, which seems unlikely, we risk litigation from a homeowner, which seems probably more likely, a homeowner or developer who wants to come in and, and do something that state law says, whether it's the minimum parking requirements, something along those lines. That's kind of the risk. Or going back to what they tried to do with 213, they amend this next year, and they add more of a stick to go along with this, more of a consequence for those municipalities who are not coming into compliance. You know, as part of the ADU legislation, that Senate Bill 241152, there is kind of an ADU grant program, that most likely those cities and municipalities who don't comply with that are not going to be eligible to take any grants from this fund, but it remains to be seen. I know there is a strong argument that the Colorado Constitution specifically conveys to home rule municipal authorities the ability to regulate their own land use. So there is that argument. Who's going to bring it? I don't know. Did I answer your question?
Okay, and I'll see if there's, is there an answer on the eaves yet? Otherwise, we may have another question.
The eaves sub-note that you're referencing is in regards to minimum distance from principal dwelling unit. So that's where it's being measured, from eve to eve. I'm not certain if that's a building code item, but it is not, it might be a fire code item, is not a setback item from the property line, however, because that is in the heightened yard exceptions portion, which does allow eaves in the setbacks.
No, thank you for that clarification. Really appreciate it, and that eliminates my concern.
When you're describing the, the buffer yard to Commissioner Roethlisberger, you said 100, I think, did you say 115%?
Off the top of my head, yes.
Okay, because the, the cutout that's in the, in the, about the buffer yard reference is 150%. I don't know if there's like a graduated tier, like if you go further and further up, there's, there's more and more setback you have to do, or more and more buffer yard. On the, yeah, on the slide that says about buffer yards, that says generally. On the, yeah, on the slide that says about buffer yards, that says generally, na, 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 na. The law proposed for development to exceed 150% of the applicable requirement of this code. Or is that a different application?
Apologies, I'm just.
Never mind, it has to do with open space ratio, never mind.
Oh, um.
It has nothing to do with the height, my bad.
Okay, there is a provision in constrained sites that does reference 150% though, so.
So it's 150 or 115?
So, 115 gets you into the requirement of having a buffer yard.
Okay.
But then, there's provisions in the constrained sites portion of the buffer yard. So, for instance, if you're located closer than the buffer yard allows, then we have to look at these other terms.
That's only for an existing structure, right? Not for a new one?
Uh, that's the best example. If you were proposing a new one, though, you could, you could look at the constrained site as well, because there's more than just existing structure that is allowed under the constrained sites.
So, like small lot residential, for example, where there's a smaller amount of space to deal with, they could, they could use this?
Uh, yes, there are a few items.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one more question. Um, on the, on the allowable size of an ADU, the square footage, so we're at 800, state says 750, here somewhere along the line, got proposed to be 1,000. How likely is it that somebody might be eligible, be able to work in a 1,000-square-foot structure for an ADU? Is that, do you think that would be fairly common, difficult?
Um, I think in general, and I don't say this facetiously, constructing an ADU in general is just very difficult. The larger you get, the harder it's going to be. We don't have a probability worked out for how many lots may be able to construct up to 1,000 square feet. It'll depend on the size of the primary, because you won't be able to exceed the size of the primary, even if the maximum is 1,000, as well as the size of the lot.
I have some data, I mean, on that, that, the Bell, the aducalifornia.org published a study of, oh, there it is, California allows 1,200 square foot ADUs, and according to their study, the average square footage of ADUs in the state is 615 square feet, with minor regional variation. So even though they allow very big ones, the average sizes are not, so by no means is everybody building to the max. It probably sounds like some of them are quite small, some of them are quite big. It says here, the majority of their ADUs, 61%, are just one-bedroom. Studio units are the second most common typology. So, one-bedroom units, I'm thinking, that's why the numbers are sort of small and the averages. It's hard to say what ours, but, but in terms of numbers of ADUs, when you mentioned how difficult they are, the most common, the most built-out ADU permissive city in Colorado is Boulder, and they, they've had it for years, and they, Boulder has two, about 2.3 ADUs are built per 1,000 homes in the city. So they're, they are very difficult to get built, but the median in Colorado is .6, but that includes Boulder, which is a real outlier. The actual median is .4 units per 1,000 in Colorado, because there's 13 communities that allow them. They're very uncommon, so if you think if there's 2,000 homes in a quadrant of the city, you might see a couple built, and then they're just pretty rare.
Do you know what Boulder's square footage?
I don't, I'd have to look it up, but I'm sure it's not 1,200 square, I doubt it's 1,200 square feet, we'll find out. But the property values there are so high, and their rents are so high, I'm sure there's a big market-driven interest in creating them. Let me see if I can find it.
I'm somewhat inclined, maybe, I'm sorry, to make a, an amendment, just to stick with what we've got, rather than allowing 1,000 square feet. It's like, if the state says, hey, you can do 750, we're at 800, why, why go beyond that? But I'm open to, you know, discussion.
I think we have two different designations. We have a seven, was it 700 in one district, and it would have to be pulled up to 750, and then an 800 in another. So, that's my understanding of where we're at right now, I mean.
One's MLRs, one's.
Yeah.
What's the other one, the smaller? Small lot? Yeah, that makes sense.
According to cityofboulder.com, to answer your question, detached ADUs are 1,000 square feet in Boulder, and detached are 1,200, uh, detached is 1,000, attached is 1,200. They would be similar to what staff is proposing here, a little bigger, or.
Um, so just a comment regarding the 1,000 square feet. I think it's a, I think it's a nice number, because, one, it's just a nice even number, it's easy to build to, it's not, we're not looking at different things. But the other thing is, I want to note is, I talked to an architect about this, because, you know, I was looking, you know, I've got some renovations that I'd like to do, and I, you know, toyed with the idea of, you know, what if I was to add an ADU? And if I was to, you know, I'm an acreage lot, so I've definitely got the building space for it. And I looked at it, and I said, well, you know, because the Colorado State Max says it's 750, but to put this ADU over the garage, if you measure the exterior of the garage, it would be 1,000 square feet. And I said, you know, what's the, you know, how hard would it be to shrink to 750? And he said, it wouldn't, because you can argue that the staircase that goes to the second floor has to exist regardless of whether or not you've got an ADU up there or not. So that, you can, you can argue that against your square footage. You can do little manipulations in terms of what you finish, in a way, to get around that square footage. So, it's kind of, and again, when we get back to how many of these are we actually looking at, right? What, .4 per thousand? So we'd need 10,000 homes before we got four of these? And, and one of them apparently is going to be on a two-acre lot? Are we really, like, do we really need to split hairs and get overly restrictive this, or can we be a little bit more generous and be a little bit more permissive? And I think if that helps, you know, if, if, if in what staff has, research has uncovered in terms of, that makes it, that adds that flexibility that people need, then I think that we can err on the side to be a little bit more generous for that 1,000-square-foot.
Is this a question or an opinion? I think we've moved on to the discussion.
Just responding to, because, you know, Sherry was mentioning about, you know, about possibly going back to an amendment that did the minimum, and I, I just wanted to provide some feedback on, on whether or not we really think that that, that restriction, that lesser, you know, 250 square feet is going to make or break our ordinance. And I don't know, I guess I think that we can, yeah, like I said, I think we can err on the side to be a little bit more generous in terms of that square footage, because it's not a huge change, right? And it's, you know, it's a nice, you know, that's what, you know, we're talking about is up in, up in Boulder, and that's, you know, and again, the number of these that we're talking about being built is so, so minor overall, that just adding that additional flexibility for homeowners to, to build these ADUs for their, you know, for whatever purpose that they need them, I think just, I think that just makes sense.
It's my understanding from staff that there are other constraints that will keep a lot of properties from being able to build a full 1,000-foot unit, just because they're on 3,000-square-foot lots or 2,500-square-foot lots, and with a house on it already, there's just a lot of bounding. The ones that could get 1,000 square feet would probably be the very larger, you know, 10,000 square foot lot, where proportionally, it's probably not even a big challenge. That was my understanding of how you were describing the constraints for smaller, that it kind of limits many of the options to smaller.
Yes, and that is a struggle, I would say, that we have with all types of development throughout the city, is that you have the lot size that you have, and you have to be able to build within that envelope. And so lot size and setbacks do act as kind of those natural constraints to what you can do.
That's my, that's my guess of why California, which has a 1,200-foot size limit, has an average size of 600, because there's just, in a lot of conditions, they just can't be vaguer.
As we've somewhat transitioned to discussion away from, I will, I just want to acknowledge that we received a lot of written comment about this, a significant number of concerns about the ADU proposals, and I apologize, this is going to be a little long, but I did want to sort of summarize the points that we heard in the written commentary and address those concerns. And we heard some of those concerns this evening, in the testimony we heard from Ms. Chadbourne. So, I lumped the comments into a lot of different categories. First up, concerns about neighborhood character, this is going to be a drastic change to Littleton, or it'll, Littleton is going to become like California. I'll raise a point that the code says this must be similar to the main home in color and materials. So, in terms of character, we're addressing that, and to Commissioner Santana's point about the number of these we're going to see, or are likely to see. I had to go through this conversation in my day job a couple of years ago, facing these same questions. So I looked at Portland, Department of Environmental Quality in the state of Oregon studied Portland's first 16 years of ADUs. Fewer than 1% of properties had ADUs on them after 16 years. Denver, fewer than 1% of eligible properties had ADUs on them after 10 years. Arapahoe County adopted its regulations in 2023. In 2024, there were 12 permits applied for. Only three of them have not been withdrawn or have expired. So three permits in review and none issued in the first year of the program. Littleton has 20,300 households as of 2023 per census estimate. That includes apartments, so caveat this with, I'm going to way overestimate the number of ADUs we're likely to see at a 1% uptake rate. So we're looking at 1% in 10 years, that's 203 ADUs across the entire city by 2035. So, any claims that these are going to pop up immediately and everywhere is extremely overblown, and really is not supported by data or other communities' experiences, getting to the request for data. It's really about offering choice for property owners. Maybe you have an aging relative that you don't necessarily get along with and want a little space. Maybe there's someone returning from graduate school to their parents' home, and also would like a little space from the 20-something. Maybe you want something that's more ADA compliant. My house is not ADA compliant. Had I had the opportunity to, when I was remodeling my garage, I would have popped the top and put an ADA-compliant ADU. Well, I, we'd have to look at the elevator costs, but I had a decent budget. I also saw some comments about, like, let's not become like California with all of these extra types of housing. And I will say that California tackled their housing crisis decades too late, and we're hoping to prevent that level of crisis here in Colorado and in Littleton. There are concerns I saw, hurt property values. Research shows that they increase the property value on the property with the ADU, there's very little other research on the impact. Full disclosure, I will acknowledge that there is a recent paper from the University of Connecticut titled "Accessory Dwelling Units' Contagion Effects," that showed in Los Angeles, ADUs did have a slight negative impact on adjacent high-value properties, which in LA could mean tens of millions of dollars. But they also found 2% to 4% positive impacts in other areas, in other zip codes. So the results were mixed on that one. In general, though, it helps property values. Also heard some concerns about gentrification, and for those concerns, I'll point them to the New York University's Furman Center, which published a study called "Supply Skepticism: Housing Supply and Affordability," which effectively debunks that concern. If we, it's like the joke about an economist being replaced by a parrot quoting supply and demand. If you are increasing supply overall, even if that individual townhome is going more for the houses that are next to it, the 2025 house compared to the houses built in 1952, it's going to have a premium price, but it does open up housing elsewhere, and the overall effect is that it helps moderate the price of housing. Heard a lot about parking in the comments, we heard about parking this evening in person. I'll reiterate that we're likely to see fewer than 203 accessory dwelling units in the next decade. So the impact is going to be minimal. Also, the Journal of Transport and Land Use studied available parking in Sacramento, California, and found a surplus throughout the city. The report was titled "Not Enough Parking, You Say: Volker &amp; Thigpen 2022." Parking was also a concern in Portland, which is why Department of Environmental Quality looked at that. They found that ADUs contributed 744 cars to on-street parking compared to 226,000 cars from single-family homes. It is a minuscule portion of total parking demand that we can anticipate in the city of Littleton, should this be adopted. So based on studies and experience in other jurisdictions, ADUs have-not-do-not-and-will-not create parking problems. I appreciate staff's discussion about the size, and some of our discussions about the size, and that we're trying to tailor this uniquely for our community, helps with smaller lots, but there are things that will moderate that, the maximum lot coverage. It must be subordinate to the house, so my ADU on my property could be no more than 960 square feet. Fair enough. There were some concerns about utilities and water and sewer. I'll just observe that, you know, we investigated those issues when we were discussing middle housing, and found that water sewer supply was adequate to support converting, to allowing fourplex apartments within neighborhoods. Again, 203 units over the next decade. Traffic was also a concern, and that was also looked at with the middle housing discussion, the impact of 203 additional units will be minuscule. And if you reference the Oregon study on Portland, ADUs had fewer vehicles per household than standard single-family. It was below one vehicle per household on average in Portland, compared to 1.8 in the USA. And I will offer one final comment on the rear setbacks, you know, I appreciate that's what the state says, that's, I don't like how the mandate is applied to attached ADUs, because, you know, it can creep awfully close to that rear property line, but that's, that's what's in the statute, and I think a lot of other dimensional standards and lock coverage will address those. So I just wanted to get, first off, acknowledge all of the public comment we got, and address at least the sort of policy and how ADUs might affect Littleton issues that were brought up in the comments. I won't touch home rule, because it's not a land use issue. So, I will, on the ADUs, be supportive of the proposal. Sorry, sorry to take monologue there, but I did want to, I really wanted to acknowledge how much I appreciated the comments, and, you know, they were very passionate, but they were not based in data and experience and the body of research on accessory dwelling units.
Chair, I'd like to just add one, one more, I likewise appreciate the comments, and one thing I'd like to also address is that we, that my experience in the city is that we have a number of ADUs from prior decades. Before 1950, my neighborhood is chock-full of them, over garage units that are two stories with a peaked roof on top, but they've existed in the fabric of the city. The challenge in many of the comments is how destructive they'll be to the character or flavor of the community, and they've been long part of the flavor and character of many neighborhoods. Even, even Aaron's district over there, the acreage real estate, there are a number of large barns and converted ADUs, and we, there, it's amazing to me how much they've already, they're part of the traditional fabric, in addition to all of your important economic and impact questions, that they're, they are traditionally found here, and we're getting kind of back to allowing them, rather than pushing some new product into the world of Littleton. They were, they're just here. So, but I really appreciate all of that research you did, and those are great points.
Yeah, just to kind of follow up on that, is there any, are those pre-existing sort of conditions, are those units aligned to the style of the house? of conditions, are those units aligned to the style of the house, the primary unit?
Some, yeah, many of them are. And some of them are very well matched to the, there's a one, a really great example of this at the corner of Bemis and whatever that road is that connects to Stern Park. It's Pete's House on, on Bemis, the first corner one. There's a lot of different styles. Some of them are just little cottages that look kind of like the farmhouse that used to be the main farmhouse, has like a in-law unit that was built in the corner. But you can find a lot of variety in them. Sometimes they don't match at all. But I, I found the traditional ones do kind of look like the brick house that they were built behind. And I actually, I kind of enjoy the variety when they don't. But that's just my personal feeling.
No, I was wondering if we had any appetite for a provision that said it had to match the primary unit style of home, but it doesn't sound like we have that desire to push in that direction.
Yeah, I would say that the 1,000 square feet is going to sort of take care of itself based on lot size. It's, that's going to be your major constraint, is how much space you've got to build something in. Yeah, other than that, I think a lot of stuff has already been said about it. Thank you for your, for your research on the, on the topic. So.
Okay, yeah, so I know I already kind of started my comments, but I guess I'll finish them. Yeah, so way to jump in there and, and steal all my scientific database talking points. I appreciate it. No, no, yours were better. No, it's funny because it's like, you know, one thing I keep coming back to is the, if you've ever heard the, the phrase, "In God we trust, all others bring data." Apparently, it's on the wall at, at Johnson Space Center in NASA. And as a NASA contractor, and you know, as an engineer, I'm very data-driven, data-focused. And I think that that's how we do need to make sure that we make our decisions on a data-driven approach. But I do think it's still important that, yeah, we, we listen to and address the concerns of, of all of our neighbors here in Littleton to make sure that, you know, we can, we can try to convey as best we can and assuage some of those concerns. But ultimately, I think it comes back to, we do need to commit to making a data-driven approach. So, yeah, I had notes about, you know, I, I really appreciate you bringing, or mentioning the land use restrictions in California that got them where they were. And that's what we're trying to head off. One of the things I want to note about, you know, we talk about home rule, but the, the housing shortage isn't a local issue. It's a regional issue. It expands far, it's, it's beyond Littleton. And Littleton isn't being asked or singled out to bear the brunt of ADU production. There's, there's nothing special about, don't take this wrong. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing special about Littleton that would make it the epicenter of ADU construction compared to Centennial, or Anglewood, or Sheridan, or any of these other municipalities that are nearby. So I, I think that to make this change kind of with our neighboring communities is important as well, because we are all in it together. So, and, and again, you as noticed, this is not going to fix a housing shortage because it's a very small growth. But I think it makes sense to, to start small. The other thing, you know, we, we talk about, you, you talk about ADUs that are, that are already existing. But one of the things I learned both from attending the American Planning Association's conference and then also seeing examples nearby, is that you can, you cannot, you can, you can vote no and bar ADU production in the code, and you will still get ADUs. Because I, I know them, right? I know they, I know how you can, I, I know people who have, you know, who have vacation, you know, and I also know people in, you know, vacation properties where ADU construction is restricted. I know people who have done garage renovations and basically piped in everything that's necessary to make it into an ADU. They just didn't put all of that detail on the permitting. So you don't really stop it if you don't put it in the code, which you get is unpermitted ADUs, which I, I think is probably more of a detriment to Littleton than allowing a coded, or, you know, than putting it in the code and making sure that we have, especially things that are going to be used as residential structures, fully up to code. And we do that by not putting too many barriers in the way of people getting those structures to code. So. Other, other options or other items, just, I do think that, I don't really have any comments on the restrictions on turf. As far as the transit-oriented development limiting that parking, parking minimum being stricken from certain parts of the city, and if that puts things, puts a burden on certain parts of the city. I just want to say I'd be all for eliminating parking minimum citywide, and then it would be fair to everyone. But, you know, the, the other thing I just want to note, too, is you, I mean, we talk about what would happen is if we, if we didn't comply. And one, I think it's a big, I think it's kind of rude to our neighboring communities, again, because I think we need to take a comprehensive approach for the metro area to fix this. But I don't think it's worth getting sued over. I can think of a lot of things that the city should be doing with their resources than dealing with lawsuits for a .4, what, for four ADUs per 1,000 residences? 10,000 residences. It would be four ADUs per 10,000 residences. And we want to get sued over that? I don't think that's a particularly good use of anyone's time, especially given that this is a pretty, you know, again, we already have a certain amount of ADU legislation in the code. If you look side by side throughout the code, changing from what we have to what we, what's being proposed is not drastic or earth-shattering, I think, by any means. So, yeah, I think that this is, I, I think that this is pretty mild. I think it's not, again, it's not going to change our character overnight. I think the, the, the areas where we're going beyond what the state has asked is not a huge, it's not a huge diversion. And again, there are other limiting factors, not just lot size, but construction costs at, you know, $400 per square foot, 1,000 square foot ADU is, is not a small investment Sorry, that was a little rambling, but I think I hit on all my highlights. And yeah, I'm supportive of the, of the changes that, that are being proposed, both for ADUs as well as turf, transit-oriented development. Did we talk about mailers yet, or are we talking about that separately?
That'll be a different item later in the summer.
Okay, 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 sorry. I was, yeah, I was trying to think. I was thinking about, like, all the things on the agenda, and I was like, wait a minute. All right. Thank you.
Okay, well, I enthusiastically support what we've been talking about here for a couple of months. I, I think the idea of ADUs allowed on all residential properties, it's compelling to me that, the argument that it's not just because the state's telling us to do it, but that it's consistent with our comp plan. I think, I think that's important to note. And I think it, it makes sense to me to, to allow that. I'm not afraid of what that might do to change the character, although I, I do recognize that a lot of people are. And, you know, especially reading the comments, hearing the comments from the folks that showed up in December and November. We have a very passionate population here, people that have lived here and loved to live here for a very long time. My experience here and living here 26 years myself is that people are resistant to change. They love the character. They're really nervous about changing it. So I understand where that's coming from. But I think a lot of the comments that I read were still reading into it, the, what was proposed back last fall, that, you know, it was going to allow multi, multiplex units in every residential property. And ADUs are certainly a different animal. But I do, I do feel there's a big difference between 1,000 square feet and 800 square feet. And I'm going to float an amendment if Sherri doesn't, to this, to, to reduce it to that. I think there's three reasons for that. One is the correlation between the amount of parking required and the size of the unit. I think there is that. I also think, because we've already established a size in our current code, I don't really see a reason to change that. 800 is what's in our current code. And, and then the, the input from the public, to me, it warrants being listened to. And, and it wasn't just anti-ADU or anti-multiplex. It was also thoughtful in that, you know, 800 square feet is a, is equivalent to a one-bedroom apartment, one-bedroom, one-bath apartment. And the 1,000-square-foot demonstration that was in the presentation today scared me a little bit. I mean, that's a, that was a pretty generous size apartment there. And with that comes more burden on that neighborhood. So, so, you know, that's the one sticking point for me on the ADU units is that size. The other items I support, non-functional, functional turf, I'm very familiar with that from my work as a landscape architect and with Denver Parks. I think that's justified, and as it applies to non-residential properties is, is, is appropriate. I think, you know, if we do, in the future, go to applications that involve residential properties, I think we, we ought to think twice about that because there are new varieties of turf that are low-water use and very usable even in a non-functional sense. So I'd be in favor of not limiting what people can use in their landscape, at least residential landscapes. So, yeah, that's all I have to add at this point.
I just, I'll just say that about the parking, because I didn't talk about the parking minimum, and I do think that that was an important point you made about incrementalism. And that, you know, we have no parking requirements in our historic downtown. That was one of the signature moves that opened up a lot of value in that neighborhood. And that was a very small step for removing parking minimums. This, this proposal here before us tonight is a second step. It's allowing a reduction of parking minimums on certain buildings within a very defined area. And that area is probably the best area we could remove parking minimums. It's transit-serving places around the station. So we get a lot of pressure to not do things too fast or roll out too much craziness. I, I think that this is a good example of a kind of incremental step forward on parking minimums, and we see, we'll be able to see how that goes. So I thought that was a, it's a, to me, seems like a nice step up from what we had.
Yeah, I just think my sense of the, the ADU size is that the lots are restrictive. And, and whether they're not, street parking would, you know, allow for that, that size and additional population there.
My first comment is, I like to bring up issues that need to be, I feel like they, that the answers need to be heard by all. And so I thought it was important to hear about home rule, because it is a big deal. And I have been very familiar, familiar with it over the years, with different cities taking a very hard stand on that. There are only, what, four home rule cities? Are there? Oh, I thought there weren't many of them anymore. It's okay. If you know, that's great. But otherwise, but also, I feel like it's important to hear the different opinions. The input that we receive from the citizens, I, one of the, one of the biggest things that did come out was the 1,000 feet. Yes, it probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference in terms of what could actually be built because it's so restrictive. However, I felt that was, that is a big issue that came forth with the citizens. I mean, there were a lot of comments that was mentioned over and over and over. And I thought, okay, yes, I would throw out there that we, why, why, you know, fix it if it ain't broke, because it's probably not. So otherwise, I support all the other recommendations that are being made. And probably one of us will offer an amendment. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think just one final point is, I think, you know, earlier Commissioner Santana referenced several sections from the Housing and Neighborhood section of the comprehensive plan. And, you know, the goal number one, quantity and diversity of housing options that makes living in Littleton attainable for a wide range of age groups and income levels. And, you know, I think this is a step towards achieving that goal, and appreciate staff bringing it forward. And I'll call for a motion on Resolution 02-2025 ADUs.
I wrote it down, so I, I wrote it down, Chair, so I will, I will write. I move to approve PC Resolution 02-2025, recommending approval to the City Council of Code Text Amendments to Title 10, the United Unified Land Use Code Related to Accessory Dwelling Units, ADUs, as well as the 2024 State Legislative Updates.
I think I'll call for a separate motion on those. So we'll do the, yeah, so we'll do, yep, yep. So, okay, just the ADUs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Rudulovich, second? All right, so we have a motion and a second. I understand there may be an amendment.
Do you want to entertain an amendment before we have any discussion, or I'll, I'll go, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and make a motion. In order to, let's see, I have to, in order to apply the least expansive alternative to our current zoning, I'd like to recommend that we reduce the maximum ADU size from 1,000 square feet to 800 square feet to be consistent with our current code.
And do we have a second?
Second.
A motion on the amendment by Coronado, second by Almond. Discussion.
Just to clarify, the section on that code would be Table 10-1-1.7.1. So we'd be amending that table to go from the 1,000 square feet to 700 square feet. That note in that table.
From 1,000 to 800 square feet.
One more time?
Eight, 800 square feet.
Eight hundred, sorry.
I understand the motivation there, but I tend to agree with Commissioner Neely that the lots where the larger ADUs are going to be built have ample or sufficient parking concerns. The parking concern is met by the availability in those areas. I also tend to find that, that these are arbitrary numbers. You know, we, we could have, some, some states have 500 square foot, and some of the older ADUs are that small. And I think some people will build very small ones. 750, 800, they're all just numbers that we kind of come up with. One of the big challenges, both in the, in the project we just saw for affordable housing, there's a debate within the SMHO board, I believe, about that there's a lot of single-bedroom units in there. And that's how they're getting the 74 units in such a small building. And people feel like that it's, one of our challenges as a city is to make more affordable places for families. And the fewer bedrooms you have, the more single people you have, the more, you know, studios and one-bedrooms you get. A mother, a single mom and a kid isn't going to maybe as fit as well in a small place. So a 1,000-square-foot unit that makes it possible to have two bedrooms, to me, feels like a win from a family-friendly city, a place where we might be able to accommodate a small family or a single parent more easily, just in my own narrative about what these buildings can be. It's an arbitrary number, and all of it is accessory constraint. They have to be smaller than They have to be smaller than the, they're an accessory to a larger building. So, they're smaller. So, they're, you know, the, whatever the number is, it's always going to be smaller than the main house, probably obscured by when we're talking about the way we allow and position these things. So, I don't see them as being disruptive to parking and I don't see them being as, very disruptive to the visual experience of the place. So, I'm, I'm actually fine with 1,000. I'd probably be fine with Boulder's 1,200 or California's 1,200, but they're just arbitrary numbers.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, I also agree that basically the lot is going to restrict most of the, most of this activity. I also would like to say that the cost of building something like this is probably the most restrictive thing there is. They're not cheap. These are not, I spend a few thousand dollars and it, these are, I've seen estimates of like half a million dollars just to build an ADU from scratch. So, those are the, the bigger, the bigger constraints rather than the square footage, so that's where I'm at with it.
And, and I totally agree with all, all those comments, that it's, it's arbitrary and the cost is probably the most prohibitive thing. But my three reasons just went to six reasons after thinking about it. One, one is it's consistent with the state requirement. Second of all, it's current code. Third of all, it, the correlation of, uh, unit size and, and parking, and I think that is meaningful in terms of, um, a, a one-bedroom versus a two- or three-bedroom, uh, could have impacts on parking. The, the fact that it needs to be a subordinate size, so, uh, it's smaller. The public input, uh, to me is, is really compelling. And, uh, this seems to be the least expansive alternative of what we could be proposing here. So, I, the way I have to build an argument is based on, you know, other, other things that I see and, and, and that sort of cultural resistance to, resistance to change that I think we have here in the city of Littleton, uh, which I think is okay, so.
Just one comment, if, the numbers are, are certainly arbitrary, I agree with that, so why do we need to change it? Okay, so, sticking.
I, I guess I'll be the person to say, well, nobody think of the people with one-acre lots west of Heritage High School who want large carriage houses as an ADU. And, you know, uh, given that you may have a 5,000-square-foot house, 1,000-square-foot ADU would certainly fit in that neighborhood. I guess, I was kind of persuaded by some of the data we heard about earlier, you know, based on, you know, what's the actual size being built? And I, I really do appreciate the, the thoughts on the, the community feedback, um, you know, that people are really passionate about not having 1,000 square feet, but I would say the, the data kind of, uh, you know, provides some reassurances that we're not going to see that everywhere. And in fact, most of these are probably going to be smaller. And I really appreciated Commissioner Santana's comment about, you know, some, some households needing two bedrooms. So, I, I guess I'll probably lean towards no on the amendment, but we'll see which button I push when, when it comes to the voting.
My last comment is, I believe you can get two bedrooms out of a 750, 800 square feet. I mean, a lot of the older homes are that size.
Living in 960, I wouldn't want to see the size of that bedroom. So, we'll, I will, uh, set up the voting for the proposed amendment to, uh, reduce the maximum ADU size, uh, and I may get the table number wrong, 10.1.1.7.1. To, from 1,000 to 800 square feet, that's, uh, this will be a vote on that amendment to go to 800 square feet, if I can hit the button.
The vote is two in favor with Commissioners Santana, Neely, Reynolds, Roethlisberger, and Radulovich voting no. The motion fails.
All right, so that brings us back to the, uh, main motion. And I will set up the vote on the main motion.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, uh, thank you for the, the robust discussion on, on ADUs. And again, really did appreciate reading all of the, the community feedback on these. Definitely a lot of strong feelings about this particular item. The next item we'll be voting on is PC Resolution 03-2025 regarding the legislative updates. Uh, were there any final comments one wanted to, anyone wanted to say about, uh, the, the parking? I think several people touched on them, uh, the turf requirements.
I will. It, it was probably my least favorite of all of them. They hide it under the guise of transit-oriented development. None of this will be transit-oriented development, I don't think. There's, uh, it's basically the geographical lottery. And I don't know if changing the name of it would make me feel better. But, uh, I also appreciate that, uh, we at least are telling the state, maybe we don't like this so much when you jam stuff down our throat. So, um, I, I at least appreciate the, uh, the, uh, the attempt. We, we can comply, but we can also complain at the same time, so.
All right, with, uh, no further discussion on the 2024 legislative updates, I will open the voting for that one.
You need to make a motion?
Oh, we need, uh, apologies, yeah, it's reject. That, all right, utter failure. So, on, uh, the legislative updates, I will accept a motion on that.
I'll go ahead and move to approve PC Resolution 03-2025, recommending City Council approve a Code Text Amendment to Title 10, the Unified Land Use Code regarding the 2024 Legislative Updates.
We have a motion by Commissioner Coronado and a second by Commissioner Santana. Okay, now I will open the voting after we have a proper motion.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, that concludes the public hearing items. Uh, we are now on to comments and reports, Community Development Director's staff reports.
Yeah, thank you very much. We did not see the master sign plan on this agenda and I think that ultimately is a good thing to have moved. So, still doing a little bit of last, uh, of final preparation on that and, uh, hoping to have that to you on June 9th, so.
All right, uh, City Attorney, City Clerk?
Yeah, I would just be remiss if I did not mention the unfortunate passing of Bruce Stallman last week. Obviously, he was a pillar of the Littleton community, having served on a bunch of boards from HPB to a couple times on City Council, being Mayor Pro Tem to, uh, his current seated, seating on, uh, South Metro Fire, as well as being on Planning Commission, um, up until 2022. So, uh, an amazing individual and I hope you all have the opportunity, those of you who have worked with him or ran into him in, in other capacities, but, um, I'm sure he's out there still trying his relentless pursuit of achieving excellence. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And several of us had the pleasure to serve with him and he is truly a force and always ready with those motions. Uh, any members of the Planning Commission have updates?
I have just, I'll have a quick one here. Uh, I sit on the city's ta- Sales Tax 3A Review Board with Dan's wonderful wife, Julie. And, um, we had our first of two meetings and it was, it's a very instructive committee. I'm going to save most of my discussion of it for another session because we're running so late. But, um, the city's collecting about 10 to 12 million a year on 3A sales tax. It's pretty steady. Uh, the big important element of it is they're, they're holding back about 8 million for infrastructure builds for, to run debt service on things like Project Downtown and stuff. So, I think we're going to see some big, um, borrowing in the future. Well, could, different COPs and, and I'd be happy to talk to any other, any of you about what the details were on that or if you want to get the preliminary numbers. We had some pretty good data. But, um, I will give a fuller report on, after our second meeting, but it's been good.
And including hopefully what the COP acronym means.
Certificate of Participation.
Okay, so I, I don't, it's not so much a report, I think everybody knows, but I do want to take a moment to say thank you very much to city staff, um, for all of your work and diligence and research and negotiation that you guys had to do to get that, uh, Jackass Hill Connector back open to the High Line. I know that was a headache. I know there was a lot of people who were very unhappy about the closure, who probably took it out on you. I don't imagine you got some very nice emails in some of those cases. But I know it was complicated and I know you were, you know, doing your best to respect, uh, the people who border that easement. So, I appreciate you getting that back open and I look forward to, um, seeing the, the full, full connector and full path plan at some point here in the future.
Yeah, thank you for, for acknowledging that. That, that was a tremendous effort and, yeah, especially the respect shown for the adjoining neighbors, so appreciated that. All right, I have no particular announcements other than thank you, everyone, for staying relatively late today. We are adjourning the meeting at 9:47 PM.